The time is at 6:00 PM. We will take just a moment for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight and Board of, we need to start off with an approval of tonight's agenda.
Madam.
Madam.
We are honored. All right, Ms. Justice.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Justice, a second by Mr. Rossi. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any post? Okay, we have an agenda. We're going to start the evening off with a recognition of a donation for our Central Elementary School archery team.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, members of the Board, we have a generous donation made to the Central Elementary School Archery Team tonight. Mr. Burley is here this evening, and he's going to present a check to the archery team. And I'm not going to steal his thunder, but I will ask him to come forward and make his presentation, if you would, please. Mr. Burley?
Madam Chair Thompson, Admiral School Board, Superintendent Mills, and Administration, I'm Glennwood Burley, and I thank you for this courtesy. There is no higher investment in your students than providing them an opportunity to excel, provide an opportunity to compete, and an opportunity to accomplish. That's exactly, exactly what you're doing with the Central Elementary School archery program. In June, when I was here, and the team was here, I was astonished to learn that the Wildcats existed in Amherst, and that you all actually ranked nationally in the 2022 Kentucky Finals. My astonishment and pride for their team effort and achievement is confirmed tonight, as I present to them, I will in a second, a gift of $5,000. Dr. Wells, this archery program is also an investment in these students' quality of life, whereby providing them productive and rewarding experiences, rather than possibly running the streets and sadly sabotaging their future. If the team competes next spring and ranks higher than last year, we will have a pizza celebration party, my treat. So, to the Wildcats, to Coach Jeremy Thompson, I wish you each and all another successful year. Be safe, have fun, go get 'em. Amherst proud.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Burley, we do appreciate this generous donation, and we're grateful for your support of Amherst County Public Schools. So again, thank you for being here tonight, and have a safe trip back to Richmond.
Our privilege and honor.
Thank you, sir.
What a wonderful moment to celebrate again with our archery team, as well as Mr. Burley's donation. So I'm looking forward to what they're going to be doing this coming year. All right, next, we will have public comment.
Madam Chair, could I just ask a really quick question? Is he an Amherst resident? You, going back to Richmond?
He's from here.
He's from here, but he currently lives in Richmond.
Oh, all right. Thank you so much.
Okay, moving on to public comment, we have two people that have signed up tonight, and then we'll see if there's any others. The first one that we will hear from is Sean Phillips.
Evening. I had a brief moment to speak with.
Excuse me, can you just tell us your name and your address?
Sure. Sean Phillips, 151 Daniels Drive, Madison Heights, Virginia. I had a brief moment to speak with Sam Patel just a few minutes ago about this easement. I can speak from 21 years of experience living on Daniels Drive, that there is already a traffic issue on Daniels Drive. It happens every morning when the school is called in, at the end of the day, when the school is out, and especially when there are baseball and football games. This Sunday was a good example. I wish I had known of this meeting. I would have taken photographs. But as the different games were closing out for the day, throughout the day, waves upon waves of traffic would come up Daniels Drive, and it would stop, of course, at 29, and run all the way back clear to the school. So, I'm not sure the easement at that location is a good idea. I understand that is a starting point for Sam, and I understand he wants to develop that. I'm not against the progress that he wants to put in that area and the development, but I believe an easement should come from some other location. I've looked at other surrounding areas around his property, and directly behind where the Panda House used to be, down below there, the BP gas station and Dollar General are also locations where there would be a great spot for us to come right off of 29 into that property. I know it would cause him to create maybe a half mile of pavement to get over the church, but I just do not agree that Daniels Drive is the right location or Trojan Road for that easement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Now I have Novella Thomas. Hi, Ms. Thomas.
My name is Novella Daniel Thomas. I live at 120 Daniels Drive, right beside the school. My question is, I came to the zoning meeting when they had the very first one. I have no problem with whatever they're going to do down behind my house. The issue about the easement, I was told that the easement was going to come right beside my house. Now, part of the land that's on the end of my house either belongs to the school or belongs to the county. Now, if the part of the county, I understand that, are they going to take any of the easements that come on my property? I live right beside the school.
Well, typically, I don't respond during public comment, but I will say this, I don't know that any of us know the answer to your question, so.
We don't have the ability to grant an easement to own your property.
Okay, all right, because I was told when they first did this, that they may take part of my property that's right beside, because the school comes up on my property when they have fire drills and stuff like that. I don't have no problem with that at all, but it's not that much property right there that the school has. The rest of it is my property, mine and my husband's property. And I'm just trying to figure out, you know, how they're going to make the easement and where it's going to come from. And another thing I asked, and I'm going to ask again, we need a stoplight at Daniels Drive, from 29 to Daniels Drive. Like Mr. Phillips says, the people drive Daniels Drive like they're on 29. I watched at the front door, people coming down Daniels Drive, it's like there's no stop sign there. They just speed on through the stop sign. Between that and the guys on the road with the mopeds, they act like they own Daniels Drive. And he's right, I was sorry, you couldn't get out of Daniels Drive for the property, for the traffic that's from coming down there, then the church that's going to be on down there. They come down on Sunday morning, it's no problem, because when I go to church, they are down there. And when I come home, they are gone. It's all the excess traffic that's going to come down there between all the new development that's going to be built. That's the only concern that I have. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I know that, Dr. Wells, we're going to, we have someone here that can help answer some of the questions, and that's a little bit later.
And they'll be under Section 5, and you could relay these questions to them at that time.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there anyone else that is, wants to speak during public comment? Okay, seeing none, we will close public comment. We will be moving to action items for our consent agenda. I need a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the items on the consent agendas presented.
I have a motion and a second to approve consent agendas. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, let's move on to information items for administration. Madison Heights Towne Eastman.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, members of the Board, so as you heard in public comment, we did send out a notice to the residents on Daniels Drive that we will have public comment tonight, that they could, as the Board requested, that you wanted to hear from those individuals personally. So we did invite them to, individuals on Daniels Drive, they so chose to speak, to speak tonight. And again, as you've heard, there are some concerns. So I guess right now, we have Mr. Patel and Mr. Warner here to be able to answer your questions. I don't think they've prepared a presentation again, because you had that two months ago. But if you have questions for them regarding anything you have heard since the meeting, or the questions you may have, they're here to answer those questions at this time.
Hi, how are you, Mr. Patel?
Great, thanks for having me.
Well, thanks for coming back. Board members, do you have any questions that you'd like to ask Mr. Kreiser?
Madam Chair, Mr. Patel, has there been any discussion, this may be outside your boundary there, but it kind of, at the end of Daniels Drive with VDOT, has there been any discussion about a potential traffic study for that or redesign of that intersection with 29 because of this development?
I'm Trent Warner with Hurtin' Prophet. That was one of the intersections that we've done counts for, and typically, you do your counts at your peak hours, which are 7:00 to 9:00 AM, and then 4:00 to 6:00. But for that particular intersection, we did it at the school hours, and so that we could analyze that as well. The through fare that we've talked about to connect to Trojan, there's nothing in that that would say that we would have a worse impact. And in fact, we actually have a better impact for you in the fact that for your queue at your time, we are lengthening that distance around the roundabout, if you will. So you'll have actually a better way of getting in and out. The other thing is you have another way of getting to 29. So it's actually an additional emergency way out, if you will, to get to 29. So it's actually a win for the school in that regard.
Madam Chair, and I think the First Gentleman's statement, the church is, essentially, this easement is going to benefit that church to begin their process. But as far as any development of residences, everything's going to, your focus is the front part of 29, right there around the old Oriole motel, that entrance.
I'm planning to work my way back. So there was a picture up just a moment ago of the master plan, and yeah, this front part that's labeled 14, I'm sorry, you can't see that screen. You don't have any screens, in fact. Well, do you have it? Okay, perfect. Thanks, Trent. Yeah, I'm starting over here.
Madam Chair. Question. Mr. Phillips mentioned that there were easements down near the Panda House, BP Station? No?
I think what he said was that those would be other locations for roads to get back to the back, and they are, in fact, locations, I mean, there are many roads that will eventually lead back here. I mean, that is something that Amherst County actually asked us to incorporate into the design when we had all of our meetings with the planning department. You can see there's roads stubbed out here, 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 and then these lead down here. To have a development of that size, its ability to disperse traffic in many different locations in many different ways is something that the planners require.
So how, I think, you mentioned that it would increase emergency access? Did I?
Essentially, what I'm saying is, at Monellison, you have, you have the direction to your north and to the west, really, with Daniels Drive and Trojan. This actually gives you another way out to 29, if you will, from the church that you had initially connected to 29.
How long will it take before the residents on Daniels Street might see the benefit of that?
Five years.
Probably five years.
There is one other connection. I wanted to let you guys know, I had a meeting with the church after the last meeting that we had with you guys, and we talked about the problem of parking, what was just mentioned about, that there is no other avenue, there is no other place for anyone to go. So on football days and baseball days, those days that you have on Saturdays where they're stacked up, there's a great parking lot right here nearby. And what they've actually done, if you will, two times ago, we had the parking lot to the south, we've actually mirrored that. So the one that we'll probably submit for our site plan flipped the parking lot so that it's actually closer to those events, so people could walk right to that driveway, if you will. So that was on their half, hearing what had happened at the last meeting, thinking about how could they accommodate. So they want to be good neighbors as well. So that's going to address one of those issues we just heard tonight.
Final question, Madam Chair. Mrs. Thomas, her property at 120 Daniels, can you kind of show me where that is?
I want to say she's right in here.
Yes.
She's right in that corner.
Okay.
But your property, it wouldn't be, she would not be conveying anything from her property. It's the same width. In fact, we thought it was a right-of-way when we first did the layout. It just, on the GIS, it showed a 60-foot right-of-way, which made sense because that's where Trojan came through. So that's where we had our connection, because we had to show interconnectivity all the way around the development, and that was the perfect choice. Then we found out that you guys owned it. It wasn't a VDOT right-of-way, which is what it showed up as. So that's why we're here.
I think to answer your question another way, no, this is, we're building within your easement. We're not, we can't and wouldn't be able to just go take her property or do whatever we want. I mean, that's her property.
So is our easement on her, does?
No.
It's our property.
It's your property.
Our property goes across the four lanes, the median and across the road into the other side of the road. Does it go to that dotted line? Is that dotted line her property line, our property line?
That's your common property line. You're on the right side, and she would be on the left side.
I think this is the line that you're referring to.
Gotcha, yeah.
Property line.
Thank you. So I'm just wondering, with Mrs. Thomas's question, the piece of our property that's easement, is that like connected to hers, to where it looks like one? Because I'm sure there's no dotted line on her yard, and so that's why maybe there's a misperception that it could be hers, but she just wants to make sure we're not taking hers, that it's strictly just ours, for her understanding.
That's a perfect way to address it, yes.
And did you get a chance to talk with her about that?
Last meeting, the planning commission meeting she was at, we talked about it, but we'll substantiate that with her after this meeting, too.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Rossi.
The, let's say the easement gets approved, and you get approved to build construction. How long would it take for possibly Daniels Drive to benefit from having this extra road there? How long would that take from, construction obviously is going to impede traffic, but after the, from start to when it's going to benefit those on Daniel Drive?
We slowed down the process just a little bit because of this, but they've already started the process. We've done a survey, for example, we had the topo. So we've done the layout, they're tinkering a little bit with the building sizes. But if we can get that to go, we will go to full design plans. And we've already talked to Tyler Creasy here about approving the site plans, if you will. So the goal is to have this constructed next spring, if you will, late winter, early spring, and then the summer connection, so that construction's going to take a good seven, eight months. So we would time and sequence the connections for Trojan at the summertime, after school.
Right, right.
So I think I understand your question, and if I could take a stab at it. So if the benefit is the stacking of the traffic, then that would be at the beginning, that should be done by the beginning of next school year. If the question is, when will they get the benefit of the road that comes down through, probably about five years.
Right, so within, so basically, within a year, they should see some relief on Daniels Drive, with not having cars stacked up on the road.
Correct.
That's what I'm saying as well.
Madam Chair, and you know, I don't think I answered, you answered my question about, you said you conducted the traffic study there, but was anything identified, or has VDOT identified anything that would?
It hasn't identified anything that would trigger that something needs to be done at that intersection.
Okay.
The counts are too small during the day. Your peak hours, when you're running into it. When we have to address it is usually for that business traffic, morning traffic, that we run into, unless there was something prohibitive of them all the way out to 29, something like that. But then VDOT would address that themselves, because that's their right-of-way issue.
Okay, thank you.
And based on your studies, the busiest time is just the beginning and ending of school?
That's what we found when we did the count, if we were there during the day or the other time. or the other times, it just isn't much there to, but we did see it stacking. The day that we counted, it was five cars was the most we saw stacked on Daniels. We did not see it go all the way to 29, but we were there just one day. So maybe it does happen the day we were there, which you have to do a count on Tuesday, Wednesdays, or Thursdays because of the way that the requirements are. But you have to be there on a day that's logical, so it was a day that school was in, and we went to the time that school was in, so we could see how long the queue was. And the longest we saw a queue was five cars on Daniels.
Questions?
Madam Chair, I know Mr. Adams had conveyed some concerns with, you know, traffic, construction traffic during baseball and things of that nature, so I don't know if you'll be willing to?
Yeah, actually, we just had a conversation beforehand. I don't know if you want to jump in and talk, or if you want me to kind of tell them what the nature of our conversation was, but I'll just, so I think Mr. Adams' concern was traffic during baseball season, during the summertime. So this connects the current connection right here. There's no need to do anything with the current connection until such time as all of this other stuff is done. So it really will have no impact as far as how it's currently used, and then, of course, going forward, hopefully it'll improve things for him as well.
Yeah, I'm Ronnie Adams, president of Madison Heights Baseball, and I've went from, don't put no church beside me, to, okay, the church is coming, let's make it the best we can make. So I go all the way back to 1992 with this same issue on Daniels Drive. I was involved with a study of VDOT back then because we didn't want to dump our traffic on the folks on Daniels Drive. There's two things that could maybe happen here to improve this situation. One being directing this traffic now that Woody's Lake Road is wider, the curve is gone, and it exits into 29 at a stoplight, would be if VDOT would even consider either a cul-de-sac at the end of Daniels Drive and all-traffic funnel to Woody's Lake, or if they would consider making Daniels Drive a one-way street, where you exit in front of the school to the left, to the traffic light and go out. I learned a lot in 15 minutes when I got here from Mr. Patel and Dr. Wells. My concern at first was, in this utilities right here, there is the electric power that runs my facility, there is the Verizon, the underground telephone that runs my facility, there is the cable that runs the internet system for Monellison School, and there is this sewer that comes across up here from Trojan Lane, and all of that. But now, there is a, there is a stop right here in Ms. Thomas's yard, and from what I understand, that this utilities, and this is where I learned tonight, is going to be moved over to here and still be on school property. If that's the case, that's beautiful. I've asked the school board for 25 years to make it two-way right here, and somehow tonight it became two-way going in and out of here, which is another great thing. So my problem at the start, and Mr. Patel will tell you, was in the future, was this church going to be tied in in any way with a school, a private school? And he's assured me that it's not. That was my main concern with the traffic was if there was a school, because the school that I'm basically speaking of was in my church at one time, and I know how much traffic they have, and there's no way, I don't care what you do from the school to 29, that it could handle a school. Now we got to think it's a church. It's on Sundays, maybe Wednesday nights, okay, now the traffic at this church is not as bad as it scared me to be, if it had been tied in with a school. So that's going to help. Does it still help these people on Daniels Drive? Whether they put a church there or not, something needs to be done with the traffic that goes out of Daniels Drive. Somehow, we need to do a study, get VDOT involved, and do something now, especially since Woody's Lake Road is, there's not that big curve at the foot of the hill anymore, there's not that big ditch at the foot of the hill anymore, it exits to 29 on a traffic light, and the worst thing you can do, and I tell my parents at the parents' meeting every day, the worst thing you can do is exit Daniels Drive because you're going into 29 into a blind curve. So the only problem as far as I'm involved with now with the baseball, because I can't speak for the folks on Daniels Drive with the exception of, I've never wanted my traffic on there, but I can't stop it, is a congestion area right here. Right here. Is a congestion area right here.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
And I think there's somebody from VDOT that can solve that problem, whether it's a roundabout, whether it's a cul-de-sac, whether it's one-way in, there is a resolve to that problem. And I understand what he's saying by this exit and safety, but we're still throwing that traffic on Daniels Drive. When they exit here and it's safety and they're going to go here, they're going to still exit there. I do know that working with Monellison, when we have the rescue squad and stuff come down, if we have a child hurt or anything, they exit Woody's Lake Road, even though it throws them just about a mile out of their way, they still exit Woody's Lake Road because it's so dangerous going out of the end of Daniels Drive. So that becomes my only issue now, and I mean, if he puts his parking lot on this side of the church, I mean, it benefits us. It benefits us greatly because we don't play ball on Sunday, football don't play ball on Sunday, and I seen the traffic these people were talking about on Daniels Drive on Saturday. And so, yes, there is a problem there with or without the church, I don't know how we solve it, but with knowing that the utilities are now going to be over here and not take any of, and I, I came here tonight going, okay, you got a plan going into the church, how you going to get out of there? Because the school board meetings that I've been to in the past have never considered making that two-way in front of Monellison Middle School.
Mr. Adams, I appreciate your input and your knowledge and information. Board, do you have any questions further for Mr. Patel?
I have one question, please, Madam Chair. It's more, I think, maybe for Dr. Wells and Mr. Patel. With the changes at Woody's Lake, how has that impacted traffic? Are we directing more people that way?
Well, we encourage people, all our buses go down through Woody's Lake into 29, if they're going to 29. We don't use Daniels Drive for any of our transportation just because that intersection of 29 is not safe for our buses. So all our, all our school vehicles exit Woody's Lake Road down Trojan Road. We encourage our parents to do the same, but again, that's, I can't sit there with a roadblock sign and make them go the other direction.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, so looking at the drawing, the dark gray would extend the amount of capacity, I guess, for cars waiting to go into Monellison. What is the length roughly from where that oval curve is down to that traffic circle? 600 down? So you're adding about 1,200 up and back? What's the length of Daniels Drive, roughly?
Probably 900.
It's a little, it's less than a quarter, I know that.
So we're potentially adding enough capacity to take traffic off of Daniels from backing up? I'm just asking. Okay.
There is a factor to throw the wrong direction, but we will also have students from our development going to Monellison as well, so you've got some of that quirkiness in there, too.
Right. Okay. The only other thing I would recommend to Mr. Patel is if you could meet Ms. Thomas to show her the line, exactly where the line is, so that she sees, if there's things planted there that are not going to survive the move, that we know, she knows ahead of time what's going on.
One of the things we've wanted to do, but we haven't started the survey, is there's some line work that we have to do. We have to pick up some utilities that Ronnie just mentioned, and what we'll do is we'll mark that line when we're there, and we'll have a conversation with her about it.
Okay, thank you.
Question, or maybe comment. It sounds like based on Mr. Adams' comments and things that I had even thought about before, about like, you know, if there was a lot of congestion to do some one-way kind of things, or some creative things as far as directing traffic. I think there could be things that could eliminate during some busy hours if we had to. Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much, appreciate you coming again. Okay, Dr. Wells?
So, that being said, I need a consensus from the board to how you want me to handle the easement, if you want to make a decision tonight, or if you want to wait, but if we could make it tonight, I know it would speed their process up. So if you're so inclined, you could give consensus tonight, and we can take care of that tomorrow. If you're not inclined, then we can continue discussion.
And can you talk with us about the deed of easement?
So that's attached in board docs, and so I've had Mr. Wright and Mr. Patel been back and forth on it, and Mr. Wright, our school attorney, has given his approval of the easement document.
Board, what's your pleasure?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Kreiser.
I move that we go ahead and approve the easement as presented in the agenda.
A motion on the floor, is there a second? I have a second from Mrs. Burke. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Justice.
I believe in the long term, it, it looks to me like it will benefit Daniels quite a bit, and so I support that flexibility that's being added in there.
Anyone else? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
So tomorrow, we will sign, it needs my signature to be notarized, and we'll get it notarized tomorrow and get it processed. Okay, thank you. All right. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Hutton, 5.02, Administrative Services.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, you have been viewing, you have been viewing the blueprints for the new cafeteria auditorium for some time. We, they have prepared a short video walkthrough. Ms. McNerney's going to put that up there for you. This gives you a much better visual of the project. So the A there would be the auditorium, and then, as you see, Amherst High School, that is the, would be the main entrance going into the cafeteria. As you make the right, on the left side of the hall would be the restroom, and then up further is the gymnasium, and on the right side would be the entrance to the auditorium. You'll see trophy cases on the left as well to procure some of the many trophies that are currently at the school. This is actually the entrance into the stage area, looking out into the audience. Again, that gives you a better view of how it's sectioned off into two different areas where the partition can actually be pulled across for a smaller, like a black box type of event, where you just have the front seats, and you could actually use the back as something different, so. That's the quick walkthrough. Questions on that?
Very nice.
All right, it gives you a better view, and then we have already been to the town for the zoning and town council, so we're moving forward with rezoning.
We felt this gives you a good kind of visual of what the blueprints look like. We love technology, they can do that now versus, you know, having to actually walk through it, but it gives you a good insight into kind of where it's going to look like. And again, that, that middle section, they have a retractable wall that'll come across, and it will just separate the two sections. So, Dr. Hutton, thank you.
And that's phase one, right?
Yes. Also, just a reminder that in the next few weeks, we'll be doing lockdown drills. Message will go out tomorrow to remind parents that those will happen, so if you have any calls in the next few weeks, we'll be doing lockdown drills. Also, we'll participate in what's called the Great American Shakeout on the 20th, where our students will do earthquake drills. I know some think that that's really rare in this world, but if you remember Louisa a few years ago, they actually had one, so we do want to prepare our students for any such things happening. In addition, I have some figures on our fuel bill. Mrs. Connet helped me prepare those, and currently, our fuel is running between 145 and 155% over what it was last year. Our current, it's down to about 360 a gallon. It was about 380. We budgeted about $4 a gallon, and with the OPEC shutting down production here shortly, we're not sure where that goes, but we're keeping a close eye on it. But I just wanted to let you know that where that's headed.
Thank you.
Do you want to speak on the SRO grant? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. As far as the SRO grant, as you know, we had six positions. Right now, the sheriff's office has two that are hired and in their training. One will actually be released next week, the other in about two weeks, and they are working on a third doing the background check, which leaves three additional spots that they're still working on. And I'm not sure if Mr. Gallagher is going to touch this, but on the, on the matters of bus drivers, we are still looking for four full-time and two part-time bus drivers. I don't know if you had anything else on the other. 5.03, student suspensions for September. You have the report at your, at your desk?
Okay. Board, any comments, questions?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Rossi.
I know it's early in the school year, but have we got any correlation on electric buses and efficiency and cost for charging buses versus fuel? Have we done any of that yet?
Still working on it. That, you know, we haven't really been working on that enough, but I know the drivers, we looked at some information, and they've been taking some good information. We haven't got enough electric bills yet to really justify that, so, but we're still doing that cost analysis.
All right, looking forward to seeing that.
But we do understand that the DEF fluid and things like that, we're not having to purchase all that for the electric buses, so even fuel costs, DEF, all the other maintenance costs that are there with it, we hope to, we hope to see a benefit there.
Absolutely.
Justice?
Quick question. On our school buses, what, approximately, what percentage of our students ride school buses?
We're actually getting ready to do ridership in the next couple of weeks. I think it's around 70%, but I'll, I can double-check that when I look at the ridership.
We're around 3,000 students a day.
Right.
So with that many students, approximately, how full are our buses?
Most are full.
That's great, thank you, sir.
And that depends on the area. You know, some of your farther-out routes that travel a long ways, but you know, certainly the in-town Madison Heights routes are, they're full because we're, you know, we're fairly short on drivers, so more student, that means more students on the buses in order to get them to school.
Okay, thank you. Now we're down to 6.01, financial reports?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Connet.
Mr. Lecanage.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school board. Tonight, we are discussing the September financial reports. Before you or your standard reports, as always, just some of the things I wanted to point out. We had discussed the child nutrition revenue last month, as far as it being a reimbursable model. I did want to point out, because it surprised me as well, was that the revenue that we received in September was extremely, it was a lot lower than it was in September of the prior year. So in inquiring with the school nutrition staff, the DEF reimbursement system was down, and so that reimbursement did not come in, and it'll be coming in in October. So we should start seeing that catch up. So I did want to point that out because it was still lower than I had anticipated. On the object code summary, we still have the same items from last month. Some of the supplemental appropriation will take care of some of those. There were two new areas that were on page one, and those two are being corrected with that budget transfer that was approved earlier this evening. That was for the stipends and the leave payouts. Some of the areas we are closely monitoring, again, is the fuel. In the utilities, we are seeing that. We didn't increase the budget for the fuel last year. We didn't increase the budget for utilities because even, we look at the electricity, the heat, and the water. Overall, we were still operating within budget, but we are starting to see the increase. And then we know that, we've been told that the electric will be going up, and we should start seeing that in November. So we are monitoring that. We are also looking at options on where we would find other funding that would cover that. So I just wanted to let you know we were looking at that, as well as the ADM. I have some other items, but first, do you have any questions on the finance reports?
Madam Chair.
Okay. Just so I understand correctly, so it sounds like the revenue reimbursement was lower than expected because of a software issue at the state level?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, and those will be coming in, they'll pass in October, so we should start seeing it start coming in.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
And I have a quick question. The supplemental, the transfer of funds that we've asked for, do we anticipate seeing that as something that's going to be necessary throughout the year?
This was actually my translation of that budget book when the budget book was coming out. So that I have to own that on me, because items that were in the line of the 1121, some of that should have been allocated. So it's things that you had approved in the budget, I had placed them in the object code. So that was correcting that. Can I say you're not going to have any additional? I like that if we start seeing that the fuel is over and we have an idea, I mean, that's my preference, but it's up to you, that if, when we identify the areas where we may have funding, we could transfer it so that we could shore up those accounts. But again, that's your preference.
Well, it sounds like this is like a one-time.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Week, and it's not something that's going to be ongoing. Okay, great, thank you. Anyone else?
All right, so my next item is for the student activity audits. So in July of this year, they were audited for the prior year. We have provided the various audit reports for your review. So we had nine funds that were audited, nine locations. Pleased to report that four of the locations continued their streak of zero findings, zero comments. Two showed improvement over the prior year, and they now were showing zero comments. So that's six of nine that had no findings. So there was, you had the other three, there were some violations of some procedural best practices, but it wasn't something that was happening, you know, ongoing. It was like one out of the 12 samples, not minimizing it, but, you know, to me, you know, I don't know what happened during those, that one sample. There were two transactional violations, and again, that was one out of the 11 they tested at that school. So the schools received their reports, but we did go over with all the principals, all the locations, not saying the names, but going over everything, because it's always a good reminder to keep it on the forefront, that you need to be vigilant with your financials. And I think overall, I mean, having six out of the nine to have no finding is, it's positive. I'd love to come back next year and have nine out of nine. So, you know, we're working towards that. I will say that we've had a lot of turnover, and we're doing a lot of training, and we're still not going to give up on that goal. Do you have any questions?
Very much.
All right, so my last item is referencing the federal monitoring. So between April and July of this year, we had several federal grants that were monitored. On April 29th, we had the Title IV monitoring. On May 4th, we had the Title II monitoring. And on July 13th, we had the ESER and the Gears monitoring. So with the Title II, the ESER, and the Gears, we met all program requirements, which is spectacular. The Title IV did have one finding, and it's a little unfortunate because in this instance, the school division has been doing it properly. We just couldn't show where it was written into policy or regulation, something that was in writing to say that we had to do it. So we were doing it, but we did not, we could not provide that written documentation. So on the 29th, we did provide that corrective action plan to the state. And in that plan, we stated that we would be bringing a regulation to the board in November. So we just wanted to make you aware of the finding and what we are planning to do to resolve it. Do you have any questions?
Very well done. Okay, I think we're ready to move on to accountability.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, members of the board, as we get into instruction, I just want to spend a few minutes to sit some, the background, and sit the stage a little bit before we give over Dr. Norman. But, you know, we look at our data from last year. I think it's important to reflect on where we've been as a division over the past three years. Prior to the pandemic, all our schools were fully accredited, and we were moving in a very good direction. You know, March of 2020, we all know that we were all schools across the Commonwealth ordered to shut down, and so we were shut down. 2020, 2021, that 1,800 students were on virtual or remote instruction. In elementary schools, due to the size limit restrictions in classrooms and transportation, we were running elementary schools four days a week. Half the kids were doing math and English, and half the kids in the gym doing social studies and science. And then they would switch halfway through the day. The secondary schools, they're in school two days a week, and they were doing remote instruction three days a week. As we moved into the 21, 22 school year, we started the school year off a very limited contact. We wouldn't let students, teachers do small group instruction. We had, we couldn't do labs. We were trying to keep people as separate as possible. If you remember, in the first two weeks of school, we shut down for a week, week and a half, and had to test everybody because the health department said we had an outbreak, and we had to, you know, take care of those issues we dealt with, deal with COVID. As we moved into the middle of the year, January, February, March timeframe, you know, we kept schools open. And we, you know, we had these conversations, but schools were kept open. But can I sit here and tell you we had good quality instruction going every day when I had half my teachers out of a school, or half the students out of a school, or a grade, you know, any given time? You know, obviously, we didn't. So I just want to sit to just remind you of that. But what I do want to also say is that, you know, as we move forward, and regardless of what data you're going to see, we can't go back and change anything. All we can do is use this data now as our baseline data and move forward. So we need to just, you know, we need to take the time to look at this data. And our team, Dr. Norman's staff, and our staff here in our schools have been working tirelessly to analyze the data, to look at the data, and develop plans to move forward. And that's what our goal is, to move us forward, to get to where we were before the pandemic, and turn back to those levels. So just want to set the stage a little bit first, so just remember where we've been over the past few years. And we know where we need to be, and we're going to do a thing of our power to get us there. So now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Norman, and she's going to go, her staff, we're going to review the data and our corrective plans moving forward. So, Dr. Norman.
Okay, let's start. First of all, I'd like to thank my staff, Ms. Jill Gwell, Ruth Matheny, Robin Wheeler, and Wanda Smith, who pulled together all of our data, who have worked tirelessly to put the presentation together, who have given you your books. If you'll notice, in front of you, you have a big gray binder. We're going to go through parts of that information for you tonight and just give you the highlights. Then you can take that binder home, you can review everything imaginable in it, provide questions to us, and then we'll be able to answer some very specific detailed questions for you, if you have any, after you review the information that's been given to you. So thank you very much. Also, Mr. Neighbors, he's going to join me tonight in presenting to you. So the very first part of your book is the presentation, so you can go through the pages if you can't read up on the screen, because it's pretty tiny. So the first thing I'd like to talk to you about on that very first slide is the, what you, as a board, actually set aside for instruction, which is 67% of your budget, you devote directly to students and their well-being and their instruction and performance in the school division. And that is awesome. You rank right up with the, even with what the state does. And so we appreciate that because that goes directly to our students. The next piece of it really is all about the type of accountability we're talking about. We have two different accountability systems in our state. The first is mandated by our federal government. It's Every Student Succeeds Act, and that's through our Congress. And then the second is what we are actually going to talk about tonight, and that is the standards of accreditation. And that is where the state provides us information and requirements that we must meet in order to be able to have an educational system in Amherst County Public Schools, and to provide students with a high school graduate, a high school diploma when they graduate. So we're going to talk about the state accreditation specifically tonight. In the next slide, it just, I want to point out the different levels of accreditation that we actually have in the state. And there's three different levels. The first one is a Level 1, and we're going to be showing you where each school is tonight in regards to this. So Level 1 is that that school is at the state requirements, or they're above that. The Level 2 is that they are near the standards, that they are very close to performing at standard, or they are improving on that standard. And then Level 3 is they're below the standard that the state has set, and there needs to be some corrective action in place that takes, that deals with that. The accreditation ratings that go along with that is that depending on how many Level 1s, Level 2s, and Level 3s you have, you are either fully accredited, you are accredited with conditions, or you are accreditation denied. So the next slide, I just want to congratulate our teachers, our families, our students, our administrators, because right now, Amherst County Public Schools has all of its schools accredited for the 22, 23 school year. So congratulations to, and I will say, I didn't think that that was going to happen. It was a very difficult year last year for our teachers and our students and our families, and we thank them for just hanging in there with us and for doing what they did at the end of the year. So congratulations to our schools on that. The next several slides, nine of them, actually go through each of our schools. And I'm just going to briefly go through this because you'll go into detail in this when you look at it specifically. But one of the things I want to point out is that in regards to this, these are all the indicators that actually the state grades us on, and based on those, there are 20 specific indicators. If you see those little stars next to each, next to some of the numbers, that means that that particular area that's been indicated, it did not meet it in the current year, but over a three-year average, it made the standard, and it was, that highest score was used. So of course, Amalon, all green, met all the indicators. They were Level 1 through all of it. Amherst Elementary, of course, all green. We have too small of groups in some of those areas, so they were not counted. That's why you see the nuns there. Central Elementary, we have one area where we are at a Level 3, and that is in science. And this is a school that is accredited with conditions and is being monitored under academic review for the state. We also have that as a Level 2 in English, and we'll kind of talk about that, what that specifically means for them. Elin Elementary, again, all green in regards to Level 1 meeting all of the main areas. They are at a Level 2 specifically for English achievement in our subgroup of Black students. And so we are working specifically with that school in regards to our subgroups. Madison Heights. Madison Heights is also a school that is accredited with conditions. It has a Level 3 in the area of science. We'll talk about that in a minute in regards to that area for elementary. They also have a Level 2 in the area of English, because they were below the 75% rate in the area of Black students and students with disabilities. If you'll notice, and through all of these, there are chronic absenteeism. That, it shows on these actual sheets if they were a Level 1, a Level 2, or a Level 3, but the state did not take those into consideration when ranking them this year. So chronic absenteeism did not count this year on state accreditation, even though we're tracking it. The next, Temperance Elementary School, of course, all green in regards, but they have a small population, so there are areas that they did not have any test takers in those specific areas. Amherst Middle School. Amherst Middle School, green in all areas except for a Level 2 in the area of English, specifically with our students with disabilities who tagged in as a Level 3 below standard. And so we're working as well with that particular school. Manellison Middle School. Manellison Middle School had a Level 2 in the area of science across all areas, a Level 2 in English, very specific in regards to our students with disabilities at a Level 3, and then, of course, Black and economically disadvantaged students. Our English language learners in the area of math, it was too small to count, but those kids that did test in there came out as a Level 2. So they were near standard, but did not meet standard. And then Amherst County High School. Amherst County High School, I'll explain where they are on their accreditation piece right now, but they are at a Level 3 in the area of math. They are at a Level 3 specifically with our Black students, our economically disadvantaged students, and our students with disabilities. They also are at a Level 3 with chronic absenteeism at a 28% rate in regards to that. But again, that did not count specifically in this year. And so we're looking towards what we're doing in regards to that in the near future. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Neighbors, and he's going to give you some overall division data.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Madam Chair, could I just ask one quick question before we move on? I'm just curious why, you said the numbers with the stars was the highest number over the past three years?
Yes, so in the back of your book, you actually have a report that gives you, it's from the state, and it gives you your current year number, your previous year number, and then a three-year cumulative number. If that three-year cumulative number is higher than your current year, that's the number that's used. So that's what we put on the chart.
Okay, but we do have the.
Yes, ma'am, you have all that information in there.
All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Sorry, Mrs. Chair.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. The slide in front of you there, we wanted to give a little bit of historical context. So looking at our last year prior to pandemic enclosure, what those performance levels looked like across academic domains last year and then this year. So kind of putting all that together in a visual for the board. We'll note, looking at last year into this year, we did see gains in several of those areas. In two areas, we saw either a market or a slight reduction in our pass rate, but overall, especially those first three areas, we did see some growth from last year to this year. Of our next slide, we wanted to provide, and we've done this in previous years, a little bit of a comparison with our local area, some of our sister divisions here, very close to us, and how they perform and how we stacked up with that. We also provided at the very end of that slide, the state rates, so kind of seeing across. We also provided at the very end of that slide, the state rates, so kinda seeing across the board how we measured up with our divisions here in the local area, as well as the overall state numbers. I'm not gonna go into super specifics with those individual numbers, obviously letting the board look at that, but if there are questions as we're going through, please stop me and let me know. What we did further, so moving on the next several slides, we wanted to break it down by subgroup and ensure that the board was also seeing how we're performing compared to our other local divisions, as well as the state. With students with disabilities, we actually compared a little more favorably than our overall student numbers on the previous slide, and are very close to what we're seeing across the state as well. With this subgroup, as with others, we always want to ensure that we're not seeing a disproportionate impact on these groups, and there's additional data, we looked at, it's not a part of this presentation tonight, but additional data that we have showing how our individual subgroups trended from last year to this year. We didn't want those subgroups to be disproportionately impacted, so impacted more so than all students, and that was something that we did see. They were not disproportionately impacted, and that made me, especially with this particular subgroup, feel good about what we've been able to do to maintain some of that progress from last year to this year. Moving on to our Black students, again, seeing that comparison across with some of our sister divisions in the areas, as well as the state, all in all, we're looking at all students, as well as these subgroups, and I think it's important to note that we're following, falling generally in that same range we typically do. So, usually, we are middle to low of the pack, so kinda third, fourth position. We've seen that in previous years, and certainly playing out in this year as well. Again, our next slide, looking at economically disadvantaged and how we stack up against some of our other divisions here in the area, as well as the state overall. And again, the same for multiple races, and then finally, with our white students. So, again, wanted to provide a little bit of context of our performing in our area, and also showing those state graphs as well, how our students are stacking up. As I said before, a lot of consistency with what we've seen in past years in regards to where we rank, maybe is the right word to use, as we're looking at the other divisions in our area, but areas that we know we need to be focusing on and continuing to provide support to our teachers, students, and families to achieve. I'm gonna hand it back over to Dr. Norman at this point, but I will certainly entertain any questions the board might have at this point.
I don't believe there is any. Okay. One of the areas that we concentrate on, and then is a requirement through the state, is our on-time graduation rate. So, Virginia's on-time graduation rate is a comparison, the goal for that is 100% of students in the state of Virginia actually graduate with a high school diploma. This is an on-time graduate who they earn a diploma within the four years of first entering the ninth grade, and then they stay in that cohort and move through the cohort, and if they graduate within those four years, of course, we include. At this time, our grad, on-time graduation rate is above the state average at 93.31%. That is a little down from where we were the previous year, which was at a 94%, but it is above what we were before the pandemic, which was at an 85%. So, we have made some good gains in regards to our on-time graduation rate. The next slide is the actual federal graduation indicator. So, we have three different types of graduation rates that we deal with, on-time graduation, federal graduation, and then our graduation completion index. So, the federal graduation, that actual benchmark that we strive for is an 80%. We're required under the federal government to have 80% of our students graduate from high school. It is any student who has an advanced studies diploma, a standard diploma, an IB diploma, and those are the ones who come in first test time, first at ninth grade, and then they follow that cohort out. This one actually pulls out any student who have, a student with disabilities, or someone who is in a outplace program, and if they, they don't count towards the federal graduation. So, that's why that 80% is a lower rate than the 100% that the state requires. Right now, we're at a 90.07 on our FGI, which is very good. The next one is our graduation completion index, and this is dealing with the state accreditation. The requirement here is we must meet 85% of all of our students graduating from high school within their cohort, and this is a weighted calculation that the state averages out over the course of a five, a four, a five, and a six-year trend. So, you have kids that come in at the eight, at the ninth grade, but they may not gra, they may not graduate, or they may not move from a ninth grade to a 10th grade, and so they're doing a five-year, it takes them five years to graduate. They stay within that cohort, but it's counted as a, a calculation that the, that over a six-year period, they actually, we must meet, every six years, 85% of our students who go through our school system should graduate. Right now, our GCI for 2022 was 94.22, so we're doing really great when it comes to our GCI.
This is Justice.
Dr. Norman, can you explain to me the concept of weighted?
Yes, I'll try. I'm gonna read from the state, okay? So, a formula, it is a formula that calculates a weighted percent of the students within a given cohort who graduate, who complete, or who stay in school each year. This actually is calculated with our dropout rate as well, and so that calculation, that weight, changes every year. So, we don't know our new calculation or the way that the formula is created until after kids graduate, if that makes, and I know that probably doesn't help explain it in detail, but I, this is what the state gives me.
Dr. Norman, I don't know if this is correct or not, but does each type of diploma have the weight, not the student?
Yes, ma'am, the type of diploma.
That helps.
So, if we have an advanced studies diploma, that diploma, that, that diploma that we've awarded is a percentage towards our GCI. If it is a, a standard diploma, that is a percentage. If it is a completion of, I can't even think of what the name is called. Where they attend school, but they don't take any tests, so they don't actually get a verified diploma, certificate of completion, we get actually a percentage on that. And we have some students who actually refuse to take the state test, and so they go all the way through school, and they get a certificate of completion.
Okay, if I understand you correctly, it's, this graduation rate is based upon, the weight is by the different types, but that completed one means, doesn't mean they didn't do any work, it means they didn't participate in the standardized tests.
Correct. Well, it means that they've either completed getting a diploma, completed getting a certificate, or attended school. I mean, it is, you get a percentage of any school, who, any kid who's in your school for six years.
And I think it also weighs about, did you graduate on time, five years, six years? So, that's also part of the equation.
And then, how does the dropout fit in there?
If they drop out, we, it depends on what grade they drop out, and that is a percentage that goes towards us. So, if they drop out as a senior, they turn 18 in February, they don't wanna go to school, and they don't hang on until May when they can graduate, we get more of a percentage, like a .89 or something like that, rather than if they gra, if they drop out at 10th grade.
It's prorated.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
The next part is that dropout rate, and so we range anywhere from a 7% dropout all the way down to, one year, we had it at 2%. This year, last year, we had a 4.09%, which was lower than the previous year, which was a 4.30 for dropout rate. The next is chronic absenteeism, and in regards to chronic absenteeism, again, this did not count against accreditation this year, and we are working diligently, I will say, Ms. Petron has done an awesome job in having everybody participate in what we know is a really difficult struggle for kids to reengage back in school. This past year, we had a 26.1% of our students who missed more than 10% of school, more than 17 days, that they would've missed, that went against us in our chronic absenteeism. This did not count against us this year, but it will go into our three-year average in the next three years, and it will count for us next year. Ms. Petron has done a lot in the last four or five months in regards to show up Amherst, where I know she and Dr. Wells are gonna talk about that, as well as the ATSS, which is at the division level, as well as our school levels, which is Amherst-tiered Systems of Support, and our schools have been doing incentive programs to help with our chronic absenteeism. It's a great program, and she's done a great job on it. And I'm gonna turn it back over, do I turn it back over to you? No, I get to keep talking. Okay, so where are we, and what do we need to do? Okay? I'm gonna just give you the nuts and bolts of it. We have nine schools, and when I was talking to you about those little stars next to the three-year cumulative average, of our school, nine schools right now, the ones who were accredited on a three-year cumulative average, that means we use their highest score, six of the, six of our schools were, are now accredited under that, Amherst Middle School, Manellison, Amalan, Central, Elan, and Madison Heights. Of those six, two of them are accredited under conditions, Central Elementary, Manellison Middle, I mean Madison Heights Elementary, and both of them are in overall science in regards to meeting below standard in regards to science. Then we have a category called triennial accreditation, and we have three schools currently right now under triennial accreditation, meaning that it did not matter what scores they received over the last three years, because previously, in the previous three years, they met above standard in all the areas and all the 20 indicators, and because of that, they were fully accredited for three years, and it did not matter what scores that they made. That was Amherst County High School, Amherst Elementary, and Temperance Elementary. So, they received full triennial accreditation for the last three years. One of the concerns that we have is Amherst County High School, it is under triennial accreditation right now. However, if it had not been under triennial accreditation, it would be denied accreditation because it has too many areas or too many indicators that did not meet at standard and did not meet near standard. So, it was not a Level 2 or a Level 1, so we have too many Level 3s going on at Amherst County High School. And then, if we used only current year information, then I'll, we would not have any schools accredited right now. Okay? So, I need, I first need to say again how proud I am of our instructors and our students, because it was a difficult year last year, and how proud I am of them right now for what they're already doing with our students, to make up the learning loss and to put into place the things that need to happen for each individual child that we have, and that's important. That's important to target each individual child and give them what they need. So, we're not in this alone, this is actually across the entire state. There are 132 divisions in our state, and only five divisions had all schools accredited on current year, only five. And those were small, meaning that they only had two or three schools within their division. No one with more than three schools had schools that were fully, all schools that were accredited in current year. That means out of 1,755 schools across the state, only 553 met the overall pass rates on current year. So, we are struggling just like everybody else, that's, and we have a lot of work, and we're working to, to meet the needs of the kids. The next thing I wanna talk to you about specifically is where does that put us with the state of Virginia? So, we have what is known as the VDOE watch list, and Amherst County is on the VDOE watch list, and you have a place in your book, and you can, this is really small up there. So, I'm gonna try to go through, we have six schools right now that are currently on the VDOE watch list, and they're ranked by different areas. So, if it is a white across the name of the school and the area, that means that that area received a Level 2, meaning it was near standard, but it did not meet standard, and it is in year one of that. Really easy to work our way out of that one. If it is blue, that means that they are in a Level 3, that they did not meet near standard, that they are below the standard, and that they are in year one of that. That means we got a little bit more work to do right there, and, but that is tangible, and that is something that we can easily move out of. Then we have the two other areas, which are yellow and red, and this means that we have seen a trend, or the state has seen a trend in those areas at a Level 2, at that year 2, they only have one more year to kinda get their act together and move on out of that. And then, of course, if you are red, that means that you are already in year 3, and you are at a Level 2 or a Level 3, which means that you are probably, right now, being in a monitored situation or accredited with conditions, and will be monitored or under an academic review. So, now I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Neighbors, so he can talk about what those expectations are and what we're doing moving forward.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Norman. So, obviously, that's the data, that's where we are, and what we wanna talk about from here on out is what we are doing and what we're going to do to address some of those things that we have discussed thus far. So, what we have here for you is a nice little visual about some key areas we're looking at when we're talking about oversight, when we're talking about direct support, engaging our students, and addressing some of these concerns that have been brought forward with the data. The two first pieces there on the left, you'll note the VDOE required next to those. We actually had a meeting here recently with VDOE, I believe Dr. Wells is gonna talk to you a little bit about that later on this evening, but thinking about what VDOE is looking for when they're talking to us. So, they wanna see what data we're using to plan for instruction, and then how those plans are developed and implemented, what the plans themselves actually look like. Those are those two key data points that they are looking for. They say, what's Amherst doing? That's what they're pointing to, that's what they wanna see from us. In addition, when we're talking about support that we're providing, looking at division liaisons, so each individual school has a liaison here at the school board office, it's working with administration, working with teachers in leadership meetings, in PLCs, in department meetings at the schools, to be that direct line, to understand what's going on, what the needs of the teachers and students are, and how we can best support them, deploy resources to ensure they're getting what they need. Also, looking at those individual needs and ensuring high-quality Tier 1 instruction. You all have approved CARES money to be spent on instructional specialists. 100% of their time is spent with teachers in classrooms, working on those things we know are going to assist them in reaching those students and getting our students to a different place from a performance standpoint, developing resources, making sure they're working with them on co-teaching strategies, if there are multiple teachers, multiple staff in the room, ensuring that there is an alignment with what they are planning, the curriculum that they're pulling from, and delivering to the students. We're also, and again, mentioned this before, working with them in those various meetings to ensure they're looking at the right data, they're talking about the right data, we're supporting them in analyzing that data and bringing that forward, so that we have the plans, we have that delivered instruction that we need for our students to be successful. So, a lot of ways, we are trying to push in resources from the division level, working with schools individually. with schools individually, not, each school is going to operate the same way. Each school is not going to have the same needs. We need to make sure we're there, we're listening to the teachers, we're listening to the administrators, and providing the resources they need to be able to move forward. So what does move instruction forward?
Madam Chair. One quick question. I'm sorry. What exactly are we doing to help our teachers with the lesson planning? Because we do have a lot of new teachers this year.
We do. So, and I'll let Dr. Norman jump in as well. But ultimately, when we have these instructional specialists involved, there's a lot that they're providing in regards to not just recommended or example lesson plans, but really digging into what should a lesson plan involve? What are the key aspects there? They're going to ensure that we have everything we need to reach the student, to get that student to mastery of the content. Thinking about a new teacher coming in, there's a lot that goes into the delivery of instruction as well. So we might have a beautifully written lesson plan that's perfectly aligned, that everything's like it needs to be, but the delivery might not be where it needs to be. There might be some support that's needed for that, whether we're talking about classroom management, whether we're talking about a co-teaching model, if there's other staff in the room, a lot of different ways to be able to address that. But those instructional specialists physically being in there with those teachers to figure out where some of those concerns might be and how we might be able to support them. But Dr. Norman, I'll let you add to that.
Well, a couple of the things that we actually have, just spoke to VDOE in regards to, we have a great mentoring program, too. So if a new teacher's coming in and they're working with their mentor or mentee about pulling together lessons and what that looks like, we have a pacing guide that we provide our teachers that matches the VDOE curriculum maps, the curriculum framework for the state. We also have professional learning communities at each grade level, in each school. That's a little bit harder to do at secondary, but for our middle schools and our high schools, I know that they've planned well in regards to that. So they're actually working with a team of teachers that teach common things with them. So a history teacher, that teacher's World History One, those history teachers get together, and they talk about what that looks like and how they want to structure their plans. We have had several of our teachers reach out to us, our instructional specialist, as well as our supervisors, getting very specific, like, I need help with this concept. Can you come in and help me write this lesson plan? And they've been able to do that. We have a division liaison at each school who works in the leadership team and works with our PLCs. And then at the elementary, we have a gift. We have our reading specialists that sit at each of our elementary schools and work specifically on our reading lesson plans. And our math leads at each of the schools, too. So we have a lot of things in place to help support teachers with their lesson plans. Just knowing which ones need our help, that's where we rely on the administrators or them emailing us and giving us information about that.
I was speaking with some teachers the other week, and they mentioned that they were going to be able to get together in groups and work on their plans together. Is that working out okay?
Yes, so we have PLCs. That's basically what that is. At the secondary level, what we've already provided to the administrators, and they're just working out the logistics, is if they don't have common planning, if teachers aren't able to get together and work on plans, we're giving them professional leave days to where that they may have the half of the morning where they have a substitute in the classroom or a co-lab teacher in the classroom, and they're able to come out, work with their co, work with their teacher, another teacher, and kind of develop those plans. So we're trying to give them some time to be able to do that. Administrators have asked for that, and, you know, unless Jim tells me I can't have substitutes, we're going to give them that.
He wouldn't dare do that. You also mentioned the mentors. Who are the mentors? How are they chosen? Is that our veteran teachers?
I will turn that over to Mr. Gallagher.
Okay.
He handles that program.
Yeah, I think this is on, absolutely, those are veteran teachers. They have to have at least three years of experience. I think there's been only a couple of exceptions to that. We have some exceptional teachers that we've realized after year two, and they are all nominated by their principals due to their performance and their capacity to relate to other early-career teachers and helping them along. So they are vetted that way. So we have a lot of very experienced mentors in our division. We have roughly 50 qualified across the division, along with our division-level mentors. We also have a group that probably within five to 10 years of experience that have been absolutely exceptional as well coming into the program. But it is a very structured process, it is a very evidence-based process. They all receive training from our division leads and how to go about that. We do provide training for our principals regarding that process and all the tools and instruments that are used, so they can oversee the mentor programs well. And I think we have, you know, one of the best mentor programs probably in the state. We have a really good program, so.
All right, thank you.
I would also say that we have a great group of teachers that 100%, if someone reaches out, they are willing to walk across the hall and to help that other teacher. It really is an amazing family environment, that I would have to say, that I have not, never once approached a teacher who was not willing to help another teacher in their building, and that is nice.
Thank you.
You're welcome. One of the things that Dr. Wells will probably go into a little bit later on is VDOE has, when we were meeting with them yesterday, they've actually offered to come in and work with our teachers in regards to lesson planning, what those elements are, how to do that quickly, as well as logistically, and make sure that we're all on the same page with what VDOE's expectations are. And so that will help us tremendously.
Would they just be like spending the day with us, or like a week with us?
We don't know yet. I think it'll probably be a day, but they, they do have training that's virtual that we're allowed to tap into, that we've already, my staff's already kind of been through that.
Just a suggestion, if this is something of interest, maybe that's something you can bring back with, in more detail, once you find out and give more information.
Yes, ma'am.
It would be wonderful.
That'd be great.
Ms. Justice?
Yes. Dr. Norman, with our third through fifth graders in the elementary, approximately how much time are our reading specialists spending in the classroom with the students?
So we have multiple areas where we're required to. So I'm going to actually ask Ms. Wheeler. So we have reading specialists, and we have, all of our elementary schools are Title One schools. Doesn't she love when I do this to her? A child who is receiving services is required to get, I believe, two and, two, two and a half hours per day. Week, thank you. They have 120-minute block, and then on top of that, they get two and a half hours with a reading specialist specific. I don't know if you want to add anything else?
Yep, so I will just say our priority is given to our K-3 students, is that's what our EIRI funding goes towards. And as Dr. Norman said, they're required to get two and a half hours of supplemental support, and we choose at the division to do that through our reading specialist. It can be other programs, support from the classroom teacher. Our fourth and fifth grade students specifically also qualify for that support. We use our PALS assessment to identify which students need that supplemental support, and that's used, you know, whether the specialist pushes into the classroom and works with the teacher to provide instruction, or pulls that student out as well.
Anything else? Thank you.
Are we, are we going to be able to see data on how those reading specialists has helped out and helped improve our grading?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Wheeler does a report for me every year in regards to PALS instruction, as well as the students that the reading specialist has identified, and where they land, if they're ID'd or not. And so we'll provide that information to you.
All right, thank you.
All right, well, continuing on a short slide here, but ultimately, what moves instruction forward is thinking about what makes a good curriculum, guaranteed and viable. It's the idea that we have effective planning and effective delivery. That's what it comes down to, right? An effective lesson plan and effective delivery of that lesson plan. VDOE gives us a framework here on the next slide of what curriculum is. So ultimately, different levels, and then identified, obviously, it's all research-based, but breaking things out, we have what and how students are taught. So the SOLs provided from VDOE, and the pacing guides developed here at ACPS, that's our written curriculum. But ultimately, those two pieces go into what and how students are taught. The taught curriculum, as you might expect, is what's taught. What do the students get? How do the students interact with material in the assigned work? What does that planning, delivery, that key component look like in all of our classrooms? We then, of course, assess that test of curriculum, our growth assessments, our SOLs, leading us to what is in fact learned. So what have our students got, and how they're able to apply that knowledge, how they show that mastery in moving on into passing courses and graduating with that diploma. So VDOE kind of gives us that framework. Again, it's all research-based, but having that idea of what curriculum is, what goes into it, that middle component, which of course is the most important about the planning and delivery of instruction, and then the outcome of that on the other side. So how do we ensure delivery of quality curriculum? We want to make sure that we equip our teachers to be well-prepared, to ensure that they are delivering instruction well, and that what they are delivering is interesting and relevant to all of their students. That student engagement component, obviously, is significant in how a student is able to progress through the curriculum and master the content that they are provided. So looking at the pieces that we've identified there, and what we want to make sure we continue to come back to, we want to make sure instructional time is utilized effectively. Ultimately, regardless of grade level, regardless of content area, we need to be working through content, and we need to be utilizing every moment we have with our students in those classes for instruction to make sure that they're getting what they need. Just a quick example, and we see this in a lot of areas, if I was a teacher in my classroom and I gave my students five minutes when they came in to kind of get themselves together, get some materials out, whatever the case might be, over the course of the year, 15-minute blocks, that would actually represent 36 class periods that I've given them to be able to pull things out, get organized, and get moving. There's a lot to be said for having that downtime to allow students to regroup and to have those things going on, but being cognizant that if that's a consistent routine, that can have a big impact on the amount of time our students are spending in the content and what that looks like. Alignment is obviously something that we are always looking for, and the VDOE is certainly keenly aware of. That's why we're moving into lesson plan reviews and working with our teachers to understand what goes into a quality lesson plan. There's so many teachers in the division that do a phenomenal job with us. There's so many good examples, and literally in every school right across the hallway is a master teacher that has this part figured out. Those are resources that we continually pull from and make sure we're leveraging, especially for our newer teachers, as we discussed earlier. We are conducting instructional rounds, so the instructional office, a period school board office, actually going into schools, going in, doing observations. These are not things that are meant to be in any way, shape, or form punitive. This is not going into a teacher's record. We're not coming out with this list of things, oh, we need to do this, this, this. We want to make sure that we have that time in the class, so we know what's going on, how students are responding, and how we can help each one of those teachers right down the road, regardless of which school that we are in. We've also provided professional development for administrators. That's our front line. We want to make sure we equip them as much as possible to know what they're looking for, how to support their teachers, how to work with individual students, and get them to a better spot based on all this data that we've been looking at. We do have access to student detail-by-question reports, so breaking down for each individual student, how they are working through, how they are being assessed, what they are actually doing and producing on those assessments and SOLs, looking at the standards, looking at what they're answering correctly, and not where are we seeing those concerns specific to each student, and how can we target that and develop that to be able to move forward. We also have access to SOL test blueprints, curriculum frameworks, unpacking standards, getting a map for what it is that the state is asking us to do with these SOL assessments at the end of the year. Are there certain aspects of that curriculum, in whatever grade it may be, that are going to be targeted more on the SOL assessment? We don't want to teach to the test, but we also want to give due to the components that the DOE has assumed or has put forward that are most important to be focusing on. We're working with teachers and PLCs, so those liaisons we talked about earlier are pushing in to PLCs, to those department meetings, to work with teachers to unpack those standards, demonstrate some of the skills and framework that goes into doing that, helping teachers gain a continually deeper knowledge of what those standards are and how we target the key skills within those standards identified by DOE. So a lot going into making sure we're equipping our teachers as best as possible to deliver that high-quality instruction to all students. I believe I'm handing back over to Dr. Norman.
Yes, and Ms. Justice, I wanted to let you know, Ms. Wheeler had told me, she texted me, last year, I want to say a shout-out to our reading specialists because we, they draw, they had a 27% reduction in students ID'd, meaning if you're ID'd, you're reading below grade level, and they reduced that by 27% across the division, which is huge gains, huge gains.
Is that compared to the previous year, or?
It is comparable fall to spring. So they ID them in the fall, and by the spring, they have moved out.
Madam Chair, I have a couple of questions. What percentage of our accreditation as in a school does lesson planning weigh?
Absolutely none in regards to accreditation. Accreditation is only on student test scores.
Okay. Are, are teachers allowed to do back planning with their lesson plans? Or does the state allow that?
I'm unsure of what you're, we, we have something called backwards planning, which is exactly what we would like for teachers to do. That means to prepare the test, that they, that what is it that the child needs to know by the time the end of the unit happens? And then backwards map or backwards plan how to get that across to students. And so, yes, ma'am, they, that is something that we, that we try very hard to have them do. And, and I will say, our, our teachers do a really well job of that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. The next thing is, so what is required by Virginia Department of Education? There's a lot that we actually have to do paperwork-wise, but what are the nuts and bolts of it? So we are required to have a comprehensive needs assessment. You, as a board, actually, are required to have a comprehensive plan. You do have one. It's, it runs out in 2024, and you're going to have to redo that plan again, but that is the plan that we, as a division, follow, your actual plan. Then with that, all of the data that we have, all of the data that's in your book, that is our needs assessment. That is, what are we doing with that data? Where are we seeing the trends? And where are we seeing those fixes that we have to have across the board? That is, building administrators, research that information, that is people here at the school administrative office and leadership teams, that's everybody kind of pulling together to look at the data and see what it is that we need to focus on. Then determining non-negotiables. And that really is a conversation between VDOE and us at the school administrative office. It's where are we going to get the flexibility to do what we know needs to be done for our students in our division, rather than following another, just what VDOE says that we have to do. Not every school system runs the same way, and we need to make sure that we're doing what's best for our students. So then the next thing is writing that plan. So every school in our division needs to write a school, a comprehensive school improvement plan, and they need to implement that plan. That is led by our building administrators, our leadership teams, and actually the teachers in the building. Everybody needs to buy in to what takes place for the students in that building. And then monitoring the plan, and that is the building administrator making sure that the things that they've placed in their plan and the action steps that they've put, that they actually implement them, they monitor it, and then they review that with us, Dr. Wells, myself, Ms. Wheeler, in regards to what it is that we're looking for in that plan, and if it's actually working. And if it's not working, we're not going to continue to do that. We're going to try to figure out what it is that will work for that particular school. And then reassess that and start the process all over again. It should be a living document that the teachers know, that the leadership team knows, that the building administrator knows, that you, as a board, can go on our website at any moment in time and look for any school's summary of their comprehensive school improvement plan, and you would know what was going on in that school and where the areas are that they're targeting. And that's very important because we, we want to make sure our parents are aware of what's going on in our schools as well.
Dr. Norman?
Yes, ma'am.
Quick question. On number three, when the building administrators and the leadership team in all writes the plan, what's the timeline for that?
So at the, we give them, they get their data. The building administrators get their data at the end of July. So we release everything once the state releases it to them. They have all summer to kind of look at their data, to analyze it, and then, once they're lead- leadership team comes into place at the first part of August, we give them the month of, end of August, all of September, and most of October. So they actually meet with myself and Ms. Wheeler, starting the last week in October, to review their comprehensive school improvement plan. And then it has to be posted, or a summary of it, because we can't post the actual plan because it's got identifiable information in there. So we post a summary of that plan, and that has to be up on the website November 1st of every school, for every school.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next thing is the requiring for ACPS oversight. So right now, we have three schools that are under academic review, Amherst County High School, Central Elementary School, and Madison Heights Elementary School. We have two schools that are being monitored under review, and that is Amherst Middle School and Manellison Middle School. And then we have school studies at Amalon, Amherst Elementary, Elan Elementary, and Temperance, and that's based on their current year information. So we didn't want to, like, leave them out of the loop and ignore them this year because we know that they're going to need supports and systems to make sure that they keep on track. And so even though we have the state monitoring, we also have school studies that are going on as well at the division level. Then on top of that, Dr. Wells, he is joining us in this process, and he is going to be conducting superintendent's quarterly reviews in regards to the actual academic review and the monitoring of each of the schools. We're kind of coordinating with him, and each quarter, he is going to review their attendance data, behavioral data, academics, which falls under what's required for the academic reviews and the academic monitoring, and then actually observations in regards to new teachers and veteran teachers. And they will meet with him along with their division liaison, myself and members of senior staff, to go through just looking at their data, what that looks like, and how it is that it's working with their comprehensive improvement plan. Is it actually working? And what can we do at the division level to support them with kids in their building? And then the next are the required actions for us from VDOE, which we have already accomplished quite a bit. But we are required to establish a division academic review team. We have to participate in the required training for Level 2s and Level 3 schools, and that is not just my instructional team here, but that is building administrators, their assistants, and their instructional leads at that building. We have to create a corrective action plan, federal participation training, which Dr. Wells and I attended on that, chronic absenteeism, which Ms. Patron is working through that system with our building administrators, and then actually completing a module in, in regards to the comprehensive school improvement plan that our instructional leaders here at the division level are participating in. We have to complete a comprehensive needs assessment, which is basically your wonderful little book in front of you, the comprehensive school improvement plan that we have to have each school, as well as the division, create. The development of SMART goals and essential actions, and every teacher in our bill, in our, in every building across the entire division creates a SMART goal. It is, they work with their building administrator on developing that and what their actual personal goals are for the year, as well as their student goals. And that deals specifically with the academic achievement tools that VDOE has given us, as well as the achievement gap tools.
And I'll say, all administrators, all assistant principals do one for their principal, and all principals have one for me. So it's not just teachers that are required to do this, but they all have to do one.
Yeah.
All the staff has to do one, so it's not just a teacher thing. Everybody has to be, just enjoy that game a little bit.
We are also conducting the instructional rounds and observations, and I will tell you, Amherst County has been doing this as long as I've been here. This is my 10th year here, and we have been conducting instructional rounds. We never called them that. The state actually trained us this year, and that's what they're calling them. And so it's something new for the state that they're doing, but we've been doing it here for quite some time. We have quality time appointments with the Virginia Department of Education School Quality Office, and that is something that we have elected to do. We are not required to do that, but we ask our principals, if they have questions for the state, rather than funnel them all through, through me, they need to have this opportunity to sit in front of the state and ask whatever questions they want to, because they're the ones that are on the front lines. So we've reached out to our building principals, and they've taken us up on those offers. So we have some of those actually set for October 20th. We have SOQ monitoring reports. We've already completed our first fall report and had our first VDOE meeting that Dr. Wells will talk about. And then administrative support, classroom lesson evaluation and feedback that we're giving. We will do the reviews of the CSIPs the end of October, as well as the middle in January, and again at the end of the year when we have our data in July. And then we will do a consultation with our administrative team and division team in regards to their CSIP, conduct division-level academic reviews that are required from the state, as well as our academic monitoring. We will then participate with the state when they come in and actually do the academic reviews for our three schools that are under academic review, Amherst County High School, Central Elementary, and Madison Heights. And then we will have oversight and review of the process by the division superintendent, which on the next slide tells you everything that it is that Dr. Wells gets to do in regards to certifying that everything that we're telling you tonight, and everything that the state is telling us that we have to do, is that we will do. So he has already submitted the first report and attended the first meeting. Then in January 31st, by that time, he's got to submit academic reviews and confirm that all of the academic reviews for each of the ones in our division are completed. He then has to monitor with the help of his instructional team and submit a spring report, verifying that we have monitored all the schools and that they have met their requirements of either a Level 2 or a Level 3 that were required to, to be met in regards to our federal monitoring. And then, of course, division certification at the end of the year for all of our school studies. That's a lot that's going to be taking place over the next several months, so he's got his work cut out for him. And then the following slide, I'm going to turn that back over to Mr. Neighbors.
Yeah, we've touched on a lot of these pieces as we've gone through this evening, but wanted to kind of put on the slide a lot of the initiatives that, that are there. Want to emphasize with this, this is not a list of new things that we're throwing out to schools and teachers. These are initiatives, resources, framework supports that have existed in Amherst County schools for quite some time, and some examples. Some of these are relatively new, but most are things that we've been doing. We'll be emphasizing certain pieces a little bit more, bringing them back to teachers' attention, bringing them back to the forefront with staff, but kind of wanted to bring all that together. What is that kind of big list of things that are going off in the schools that are supporting our teachers and working with our students, and getting them where they need to be? I do want to emphasize, as we're looking at this particular list, that we are trying to address concerns across subgroups, the data that we talked about earlier on in the evening, and we're not just focused on SOL-tested grades. I'll note, several items in this list are focusing on some of our earliest learners in pre-K, all the way through some of those early grades, and ensuring that we are continuing to build that strong foundation for those students as well. Dr. Norman, let you add anything you'd like there, but just wanted to be able to represent that to the board, all the wonderful things that are going on out there in our schools.
You will see a lot of information in regards to our science in here, and that is because we're trying to make up ground in, first of all, we have new science standards this year. We did the crosswalk last year. They are fully implemented this year, meaning, meaning they will be tested on. And so making sure that we're, our fourth graders that sat there in a hybrid class two years ago, getting one day a week probably for science, took that science test last year on fourth and fifth grade, because it's given at the fifth grade level. And remember, fifth grade, we started out last year with not doing science labs, not getting small group instruction, bringing them together because we had health mitigation strategies. So, so we're trying to really make up some ground in the area of science at our elementary. And then, of course, we have concerns this year at the high school in regards to science, as we did last year, making sure we have those qualified teachers in place to teach that. So we're dealing with a lot going on in science, but it's not something that we cannot overcome and that we can't meet, what needs to be done. And then, if you'll go to the next slide, I want to tell you, this is where I want to be at the end of the year, fully green in all areas and fully accredited as proposed ratings as we close the achievement gap in the year 2324, and that's where we'd like to be accredited. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Wells, so he can kind of walk you through how we're going to answer questions from the board and take you kind of through that process.
So what we'd like to do, I know as you review the book, there's going to be lots of questions. Instead of each board member sending us 50 questions apiece, I spoke with Ms. Thompson last week and reviewed the other day, and we would like for you to send all questions to Ms. Thompson. She can compile them, so if they're redundant questions, if four people ask the same question, instead of us having to respond, we can just respond to it one time, as opposed to that. So if you have questions regarding the data, if you could send those to Ms. Thompson, and Ms. Thompson can then compile that list and get it to us, we can work on it throughout the month, get it back to you as soon as possible, but definitely have them all answered by the next school board meeting would be our goal, if you're still in agreement with that, Ms. Thompson.
Yes, I think that helps in two ways. One, I think it helps us not be redundant, but two, it also helps them streamline the response they get back and that we'll all get the same one. So the question would be more, what type of timeline are we looking at? If we can get it to you in two weeks, give you two weeks to-
That'd be great.
-pull it together, maybe, that type of thing. And if there's things that you want, you know, you may have a question, but if there's also an area that you would like to have, you know, for them to go into more detail, you know, so, like, say it's the lesson planning, then get that information to me as well, and we'll, we'll include that so that we communicate with them well, what we would like to see at the next meeting. Is that okay?
Madam Chair.
So, first off, Dr. Norman, thank you and your staff for owning it. I mean, this is a big, this is a big undertaking. It's a lot. It's not all roses. It's, but it's where we are, and we got to start somewhere. So we have a plan, go forth and execute plan. But I had a question about chronic absenteeism. Do we have any early numbers showing how that's going?
I'm going to turn over that to Ms. Patron.
Can I have just a minute to pull up data?
Yeah, no, fine. I'm just, you know, I know where we were last year, and I know that's a percentage of days, and are we on track now, or is that?
So I actually just presented data to the principals, and I'll be happy to share this with the board, so you can look at it and understand it. But right now, we are on track, we're kind of in a middle ground. We are doing better than we were last year at this point, but we're not doing as good as we were in 2019, which would have been the year where we didn't even finish a school year, but we had comparable data to where we're at now. So we're kind of in a middle track between the two. If I had my crystal ball, I would say that most of our schools will, will do, will improve a great deal from where they're at right now, and will be just fine. The school that I'm most concerned about is Amherst County High School. And right now, they're sitting at 38% chronic absenteeism rate, which, for the beginning of the school year, is, is high, but it's not as high as it's been in other years at the beginning of the school year. So I think they're still doing good. It's better than last year, but it's still not going to get us accreditation.
Okay.
And the more days you have in, the better your rate becomes.
Right, 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 okay.
Madam Chair? Just a quick question on that again, please. For the high school, are they just not coming to school, or are they actually sick?
It's, it's all of the above. There is, you know, as they get older, there are some students who just don't want to come to school, and it becomes more of a challenge for parents to get them to come to school. So there's some of that, but there's also, we have had flu and strep and stomach viruses. There's also an increase in anxiety and just mental wellness issues that our kids are facing that's causing attendance issues at the high school level.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Correct me if I'm wrong, if a parent takes the student out and gets approved a vacation, they're going to take them on vacation, but yet get schoolwork, that still counts against that number, is that correct?
It does, yes. Everything except, well, everything counts against that number. Suspensions count, doctor's notes count. The only time a student is not in the building and it does not count against that number is if we're providing homebound instruction. So they're still counted as present in that context.
Okay.
I didn't know that if you were suspended, it counted as an absence.
Well, I think in the chronic absenteeism, it does, in that rate. As well as an excused absence also counts in that chronic absenteeism.
For the state numbers, they don't care why you're out. If you're out, you're out, and that counts in that number.
I guess they chalk it up to lost, no instruction.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question, please?
Justice.
Ms. Patron, in our absenteeism at the high school, if you could give a percentage, where does mental wellness hit in there?
I don't have any data on that, but just anecdotally, just sitting in truancy meetings and, and talking to families that are struggling with attendance, when we have students who are chronically absent, it's probably about half of them are, are due to mental health issues. We have other reasons, a variety of other reasons why students are chronically absent, but I would say that most of our truancy meetings end up being around that topic.
And if you were to compare that to previous years that were bad, is that, like, comparable, or is it, like, double, or?
No, I, I would say it's pretty comparable. We were, we had this issue prior to COVID. It, it's just exacerbated a little bit, but it's still about relatively the same.
Thank you.
Okay, so I believe we are on 7.02?
Yes, ma'am. So federal participation corrective action plan. On September 27th, Amherst County Public Schools received notification from the Virginia Office of School Quality and Federal Oversight that a corrective action plan was required for the 2223 school year for Amherst County High School in the area of testing participation. So it was found that Amherst County High School had a 93% participation rate in the area of our EOC, our End-of-Course Reading Assessment, with students in the subgroup of multi-race, multiple race, which was required to be a 95% participation rate. So we missed it by 2%. For the 2021-2022 cohort of students going through, we had 30 multiracial students, 28 of them participated in the EOC test, reading test, and of that, two counted against us, two students, and we, that did not participate in the, in the actual taking of the test. One student was enrolled in a GED program, and the other student received a certificate of completion and did not participate in any SOL test throughout their career. So we had 30 students in that actual category, that subgroup. We needed all 30, or we needed 29 of them to pass or to take the test. 28 of them did. We were placed under corrective action for this current school year. Right now, our corrective action plan identifies 37 multiracial students in the 2223 school year, that cohort. As of now, there are three students who are counting against Amherst County High School for participation. One student took the EOC reading over the summer, and so that student was pulled off. One student transferred out and is now attending another school in a nearby division, and so that student came off. And then one student was expelled at the end of last year. We actually made arrangements for that students to come in over the summer and take the test, and they chose not to do so. So right now, we, Amherst County High School already is at a 97% participation rate for the 2223 school year, and if nothing else occurs, we will remain that way. the 2223 school year, and if nothing else occurs, we will remain that way, and we will be out of the corrective action plan by the end of this year. So we basically fixed it over the summer, if that makes sense. And that is, we have to provide you information on any corrective action plan, and so that's where we are currently right now.
And Dr. Norman, am I correct that if a student does not choose to take the test, they don't have to take the test, right?
Correct.
And then it still counts against us?
It still counts against us. It counts as a zero, and it counts against us in participation.
So it's a team effort. We need help from the students, the parents.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for saying that. Ms. Thompson?
Ma'am.
When a student is choosing not to take this EOC, is this like a principal thing, or they don't show up, or is it? No, actually, in order to, so we have two different ways to do it. A student can just not show up to school on test day, and every time we schedule for the makeup test, they don't show up, and then the school year ends, and we ask them to come in over the summer, and they choose not to do so. And that is without parental notification or anything like that, meaning that the parents did not tell us that their child was not supposed to take the test. Then we have the parent opt-out, where a parent can choose, which one of our students did, to never take any SOL test, or to not take any history SOL test, or not take a science SOL test. They can, they can actually cherry pick which ones they take or which ones they don't. And they have to give that to us in writing two weeks before the test, I believe that it is. We send that information out, and they can give that to us.
But it still counts against us?
It still counts against us. Yes, sir. Now, in these tests, are there, like if a student doesn't do well on, say, computer tests, but they know the topic or the subject material, are there alternative ways for them to take it? How does that play into students not taking the EOC?
There are. So it depends on certain circumstances for identified students, those with a disability, for example. There are a number of different accommodations for alternative format, location, extended time, a lot of things that we can bring to bear to help support some of those pieces. There are some accommodations that we would typically associate with an IEP or 504 that are actually available to all students. So if a student wants to be in a smaller group in certain situations and on certain alternative assessments, if they want to take extended time or need some of those pieces, there are some of those things that are generally available to students, but it really does depend on the individual needs and the communication that occurs between that student, their family, and the school. So the short answer is yes, there's some flexibility with that, but it really kind of comes down to the individual needs of the student.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And that is all for me tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Norman. I know that was a lot for you and your team, and we appreciate everything that you're doing, everything that the teachers are doing, and everything all the administrators are doing. It's a team effort, for sure.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Rossi, I'm sorry.
I'm a little disturbed about the comments about opting out of taking tests. For the students and parents that may be listening or watching this broadcast later, can we please explain the importance of the test and why just taking the test makes a difference, and even though it may not be part of their plan, how it helps the school and why it's important for the school?
Yes, sir. I'll be more than happy to. So one of the things that I always tell parents when they, when I talk to them about opting their children out, we never like them to opt kids out because then what happens is they don't actually see the results of how well they did in school. And I hate to say it that way, but that really is. A good indicator of if they've mastered that concept is what that test looks like at the end of the year and how they did on that. Now, that's a snapshot, and so we want to build on that throughout the year, but allowing that child to go through that process is extremely beneficial to the child. It's very beneficial to us, but it's for that child as well. But when you get into credit-bearing courses, you do not get a high school diploma without verified credits. And so for a high school student to opt, for a parent to opt a child out of an EOC, an end-of-course test, is detrimental to that child and whether or not they actually get a standard or advanced high school diploma in the state of Virginia. That is, the state of Virginia will not let us provide a diploma to a child who has not taken a standardized test that they see fit.
Right, so a completion certificate is not-
Is not a high school diploma.
Thank you.
And for those children that do that, we have a great GED program that they fulfill and can walk out with a GED, but it still is not the same as a high school diploma that is awarded by you as a board, because you are the ones that award that diploma and the state of Virginia.
Thank you.
Yes, and-
If I may, Madam Chair, I think a part of that too, to piggyback and Ms. Justice, with what you just said a moment ago, I think really encouraging those families to reach out to the school and have that conversation about what flexibilities may exist and what the concerns are, and we may not be able to address all of those with those families. That's certainly their right to make that decision and not participate, but we never want that to be because we weren't able to have the conversation with them. So I think that piece, making sure families feel comfortable at any point, whether it's the school, whether it's here at the school board office, reach out, have a conversation, let's talk through what we might be able to do to make that test a little more accessible, to make it a little bit different for the student to be able to come in and do that, because there are significant implications with it. But we want to make sure as much as possible, we are open to, we're having those conversations, what can we do to make that accessible, to get the students in to be able to do that.
All right, thank you.
Down to 8.01, Human Resources.
Human Resources, Mr. Gallagher.
Yes, sir, thank you. Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, good evening. The first item I have for you this evening is this month's current vacancy report that you have before you, and certainly happy to take any questions that you have regarding where we currently stand in that regard.
Board, do you have any questions?
Madam Chair, I was just wondering what we are doing currently to fill those positions.
Sure. Several of these positions, so three of the positions you see at the high school level are filled currently by, well, two are filled by retired teachers who are licensed in those areas, one's filled by a certified licensed teacher but not in that correct area, but is a long-term sub and considering potentially testing to become eligible in that area. One of the elementary positions, we have temporarily moved a reading specialist into that position as we are attempting to fill, and we have a student teacher who is finishing their student teaching placement, who is going to accept a long-term subposition beginning October 31st, who had worked and done some work in Amherst County, highly recommended, who hopefully will be able to consider when they graduate mid-year to fully fill that position. So there are some strong options in the way we're structurally handling those positions currently.
And what about our classified positions?
Well, classified positions, we continue to post and promote the fact that several of those open positions, still, if we hire prior to November 15th, I'll be able to provide significant recruiting and retention bonuses for those individuals. The best we can do now is to continue to post and promote and support those individuals who take those positions, because we have had several numerous individuals take positions and then leave roughly after about a month. Things didn't work out, not on our part, just ultimately decided to not do that position. So it's been a bit of a struggle to maintain those individuals. Though properly supported, they have kind of ebbed and flowed, and that's why those numbers have also ebbed and flowed there, so.
And for our bus drivers, are we still able to operate everything okay with being down four spots?
We are, and we hope that there's another candidate currently on the horizon, so we do continue to try to promote and support bus driver hiring as well, but we are able to handle that current load as we spoke about a little bit earlier in the session.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, so moving forward, the next item I believe you have in front of you is the Amherst County Public Schools Emergency Sick Leave Benefit COVID-19 that was provided to you on September 8th, or at least it was during that meeting that we discussed providing that to you for your review and consideration. As it stands, I believe currently, the actual, let me pull this up, the actual numbers of individuals, of employees who have tested positive and therefore been out of work for a five-day period is 43 for the year. Those are actuals and reported. I don't know that, you know, everyone is testing necessarily and reporting everything, but that's where we stand, so those numbers are not as high as they were last year. However, you know, we are moving into the wintertime, and if it becomes, you know, something that ramps up, it probably would be nice, as you had spoken about earlier, to have kind of a safety net and an option. I believe it's an item that's been brought up at superintendent's council, I believe, by employees, hoping to have some type of support there in the event that individuals have to be out of work for five days due to testing positive. And you've had that before you to look at, and I guess tonight, certainly I'll take any questions, but it would just be for your decision as to whether you would like to vote that into practice. That is basically going to be a benefit. It's not policy, but it is a procedure that we would utilize and a benefit we would offer if voted upon.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we pass the memorandum for emergency sick leave as presented. We need to support our teachers.
On the floor, is there a second?
Second.
A second from Mr. Rossi. Is there any discussion, board? Okay, hearing none. Let's go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Thank you, Early. I didn't think any opposed, so I appreciate that, and teachers will appreciate that as well. All employees actually will appreciate that, it's not just a teacher benefit.
Thank you.
The next item, in essence, is revisions to our professional staff leave of absence regulations and support staff leave of absence regulations. These are not policy revisions, but we did conduct a regional study, a professional and support staff leave policies and regulations to make sure we were aligned with appropriate practice, that we had equitable practices that were fair for both professional and classified employees and provided appropriate benefit support to our employees. And again, to make sure we're in line with the practices within our region and throughout the state. So what we found from that is that there was a need to make some revisions that we felt were appropriate to the regulations, and I provided to you the two regulations in full with, they were marked, I think, yellow highlighted to reflect the areas that were either added or revised, and I noted those areas in the memo. So as you walk through, most of them mirror each other, both in the professional staff and support staff regulations, though there are a couple of minor changes. The professional staff regulations contain a professional leave procedure and regulation that was not there before, and that would not be included in the support staff regulations. And within the support staff regulations, there is a deletion of a regulation that we had used for a long period of time, and that was a 15, 20-day rule I will discuss that's not in the professional regulation. So the mainstay, we did add some definitions, as you'll see there. We wanted to differentiate, you know, the difference between non-hybrid VRS employees and hybrid employees, and that was relevant to some of the changes that will become relevant as to why we added a definition so people understood as we discuss that language in the revisions later, they'll know what we're talking about. You will see just down from that where there's a differentiation of the accumulation of sick leave between the hybrid and non-hybrid members. So at that point, so currently, there is no differentiation whatsoever for accumulation of sick leave, so it can be unlimited. Any employee that we have in the professional policy is unlimited accumulation of sick leave. Hybrid employees, however, under their plan, have an opportunity, I hope I can, actually, they have a different level of opportunity to have, I'm trying to find my spot, up to 125 days of leave on short-term disability, where they are paid 60% of their salary if they are on short-term disability, and they can use their sick leave that they've accumulated to offset that, the other 40%, so they can extend out their sick leave, so there's not a great need to accumulate unlimited sick leave that will build and build and never really be utilized. They're on a different plan, those that begin 2014 and after. So what we have done here is to indicate that there be a 90-day, a 90-day cap on the accumulation of sick leave for hybrid members, and that is in line with the regional divisions as well, and there are actually some divisions regionally that cap that at 60. Since our current practice is, has been 90, I thought that was more appropriate. You know, we can actually, you know, transfer 90 days in, we're going to allow them to transfer 90 days in from other divisions that we'll talk about, so it seemed like an appropriate number to allow them to maintain. If they're coming from another division, they transfer to us, and we employ them, they can bring that 90 days over to start employment, so. Employees, let's see, make sure I'm going through this correctly, I don't want to miss anything, I apologize. The next thing that I'm going to actually cite is in the classified or the support staff leaves of absence, and that is the elimination of the 15, 20-day regulation for support staff that we've had. And this has been intended in the past to ensure that we don't have employees who are, you know, basically used all of their sick leave, and they're out of work for an extended period of time with no plan in place to return to work, and then they remain under employment, and there's no capacity to replace those employees. It's a very rare thing that can happen. There have been instances in the past where individuals have done that for a period up to a year, where we couldn't replace the position, and they were kind of holding on. So initially, that practice was put into place to prevent that. And after 15 consecutive days of absence, unpaid, no leave, or 20 cumulative days, they would be considered to be separated from employment. Where I felt like that was interesting is that that only applied to classified employees, so we don't have a 15, 20-day policy for professional staff. And I think the way that that procedure is written, that regulation is written, it's not appropriate for either. So to make that equitable and fair, we eliminated that from the classified regulations. All right? And you can ask questions anywhere along the way or at the end. Next, I'm going to jump back to the employees on leave section that was added to the regulations. That was put in there also because this is for protection, to make sure that we don't have individuals who have utilized all FMLA, utilized all their leave, and are out on an extremely extended stay with no plan for their capacity to return to work. So again, we have an opportunity ultimately to replace that position when there is no plan, again, to return to work. That already exists with the hybrid positions under the hybrid plan of VRS. When individuals can go on short-term disability, this is where it indicates they have those 125 days, where they can use 60% of their salary and offset it with sick leave. Once they reach long-term disability, by VRS policy, they are separated from the division. So that's a given, that's already in policy, I don't have to actually create that. What we did was, we added for the non-hybrid, what they call legacy employees, those individuals from the previous plans prior to 2014, to where also, if they have exhausted all of their FMLA time, all of their medical leave, and they're out for an extended period of time with no foreseen plan to return, and that is the key, that the division may separate them from employment so that they can fill the position. The word "may" is what is included in other individual, other divisions' regulations as well, because obviously, if you have a situation where someone is out on medical leave, but there is a plan, and they're under doctor's care, but there's a timeframe for their return, we would never, you know, implement those types of regulations. But there have been situations where people have been out in the past for significant periods of time with no medical plan, actually sometimes, you know, doctors and family members, you know, indicating that they should not ever return, and yet they don't make that independent decision, and we're not able to replace the position.
So, Madam Chair, how do you determine whether someone has a plan or not? Is it in writing, or?
Yes, we communicate with them, it would be in writing, they would have a doctor's order or something indicating this is going to be a period of time. It could be six months that they're not able to work, but there is an end in sight, and so they can be out, and there are other options for them, you know, they can take a leave of absence, for example, there's different things that we can put into place. Or knowing that there's a return plan, then we provide coverage and we look forward to the time when they can come back. But there have been instances where there is no plan for return, doctors are not recommended at any point in time that they return to work, and giving them that permission to do so, and we're kind of in a limbo state, and that's what that's there for.
And especially in the support staff, how does workman's comp work have fit into this, where someone's injured at work, or?
Yeah. And obviously, if they're under workers' compensation, that's not, and there's a plan for them to return beyond that, that's not going to be something that's counted against them regarding separation of employment. I think that is addressed in this situation. You know, Amherst County, employees under contract with the Amherst County may be, workers' compensation leave for more than five days runs concurrent with FMLA, and the same rule would apply ultimately. With workers' compensation, again, there should be a plan for return. We don't want to penalize people for an injury that occurred at work. Ultimately, there needs to be a plan for return to work in any situation, and if the doctor's not ever going to give them permission to do so, kind of a disabling condition or whatever, limiting their capacity to do so, we'll have to make a decision so that we can move forward and replace that position.
And do our employees have disability insurance? Is that kind of part of their benefit package, or is that something they opt into?
Well, for previous plans and non-hybrid employees, they have options for short-term and long-term disability, and through their supplemental insurance programs. Under VRS hybrid members, they do have the short-term and long-term disability options.
So if they were separated, they would still, they would not lose access to that, or shouldn't?
No, and if they were on long-term disability, they would likely be receiving some level of benefit. They may have other options, whether they're going to retire. There's different things that may come up in that regard, but they would have some level of support.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair?
O'Rossi?
Ms. Gallagher?
Yes, sir.
Do we have, like, a short-term contract? And I'm asking this because teachers that are out, you know, and they're out for an extended period of time, we have a substitute teacher taking that spot, filling in, filling it in, almost like a permanent substitute.
Long-term substitute?
Right. Are there any short-term contracts where we can get veteran teachers that are semi-retired that would be willing to work for a month or two without having to pull resources from...
So yes.
Where we're already stressed?
There are situations we can enter into shorter-term contracts, and we have done that. Individuals, if they're retired and they have not been separated for a twelve-month period, are not able to return to work fully. They can return up to eighty percent of a contract period. So if you offer a contract later in the year, and it's only going to be eighty percent of that year, you can offer that contract to a teacher. You can also indicate that they can work for one hundred and sixty days within the course of the year, and therefore, we're going to provide substitute coverage for the additional eighty days within the school year and provide them a contract. And we have done that. We've brought individuals out of retirement to do that. We're also fortunate with some of the changes I had indicated previously with VRS, where they've really been, you know, relaxing some of those practices so that we can bring back, you know, retired teachers fully, you know, once they have that twelve months of separation, and provide them a full contract without jeopardizing their retirement. And the categories that that applies are almost all of our teachers at this point. So critical shortage area categories have expanded significantly as far as where that applies.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. So one of the areas that you see changed also is transfer of sick leave. You know, Amherst, as it currently stands, we can transfer ninety days of sick leave from another division or another VRS employer. That only applies currently to professional staff. And I don't know why that is necessarily, but we've looked and reviewed all other policies, and typically, that applies to support staff or professional staff. I think that that's a bit of an inequitable policy, and so what we're looking to do is change the regulation to make that policy applicable to both support staff and professional staff, to where if we have an individual coming over in a classified support staff position, and they're from a VRS-based school, then they can carry over that ninety days of sick leave, if, up to ninety days that's been accumulated. And I think that's fair and reasonable, and making sure that we're properly supporting all of our employees. I think, oh, so professional leave is the only other addition? Under the professional staff leaves and absences, we did not have a professional leave regulation in there. We did permit professional leave for individuals that were going into conferences and so forth and taking time for professional development. But we did need to make sure that we regulated that appropriately. So we regulated that appropriately. I'll just hold it like this feels more comfortable anyway, so, no. We wanted to make sure that there was a significant process to that in the way that was implemented. We can monitor that, make sure that it was implemented efficiently. So if you review that practice, that's something that we created, and we outlined at a principal's meeting for all principals, so they understood how that was to be applied, and it needed to be added into regulation. So I think that's the end of all the different additions or changes. So if there are any questions, I'm more than happy to take those.
Mr. Gallagher, I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
What would be the financial impact on this year's budget if this was to be approved?
So I don't know of an exact financial impact, and I don't even know that I would ask, you know, Mr. Connaught to jump in, because you were talking about carrying over sick leave, for example, from other divisions. This would be retroactive once it's adopted. So therefore, we may have had individuals who are support staff, for example, who have now taken jobs with us. We've done a good job of recruiting at times and bringing in excellent employees to find that I can't bring over my sick leave, so they will be allowed to have that added back in. So the financial impact is they'll have that sick leave reserve. That's not an immediate and obvious impact. It means that if they end up being sick, they won't be out without leave, you know, so they won't be unpaid. They'll have that benefit there. Providing benefits are interesting. They're not always, you know, a direct and obvious financial impact because of that safety net, to prevent people from being out unpaid and not being able to receive that income. So. And Kim, I don't know if anything you'd like to address differently, because I don't know that I could put a number.
And that might not be something you can answer tonight. I guess my concern is, you know, if it were to be approved, and it were to have a significant impact, can our budget currently handle it? I guess that would be my question, more so than exact dollars.
Yeah, it is hard to, you know, determine, because one, I don't know how many individuals we were looking at. It's going to provide them to have sick leave that they may not, you know, have otherwise. You know, sometimes with the classified, if they are out, maybe their salary is already part of the budget, so that part would be already covered. And a lot of times, some of the classifieds do not have, don't have a sub when they're out. You know, their coworkers cover the worst. It may have some, somebody has to work over, and they might have a little bit of overtime, but it is really hard to determine that. You know, I always talk about it at the back end, because then they would have the sick leave that may possibly be paid out at a later date, but I believe that policy says they have to be with the school division for five years. So it wouldn't be something that would impact us this year, as far as if they left the division.
I think that, in my opinion, the impact would be very minimal, if any, at least currently, the payout piece would be the only one, but actually, that, the benefit of that and being a recruiting, you know, tool.
I understand on that end, but my concern is, okay, if we had a lot of people that had, all of a sudden, this accumulated sick leave, and they're going to all retire at the end of the year, and we have this huge payout. So that might be something that we want to look at, just to make sure that we're okay there.
We can certainly get together and look at future implications, potentially, of the individuals who would be receiving that, which would be other support staff that could be coming into the division, carrying that over. And I think that that's, I think that that's, the fact that it was differentiated between professional and support staff, I feel like that was probably not a good regulation. And I do know there will be, maybe a potential future financial impact at retirement, once people have been with us at least five years. So, Kim, you and I can take a look at that and give you some projections.
I applaud you for doing it. I like making sure that we're equitable for all of our staff, and it looks like you've given a lot of good thought, and it would be beneficial for recruiting as well.
Yes, ma'am. I appreciate that.
Board, do you have any questions?
I do. The recruiting aspect of it, so if they come over to our division with ninety-eight, they leave, they won't be eligible to use that for after five years? Is that what I'm understanding?
No, the payout, the payout.
Oh, okay. All right, so they'd still be able to use, so if they come over here this year?
One hundred percent. And there are times when we have attempted to recruit individuals in the support staff realm, and then they do, they are concerned, and rightfully so, about what are my benefits? And they say, well, I can't bring my benefit. I'm losing all this sick leave, and what happens if I'm sick? And, you know, I don't have the available safety net all of a sudden. It's not a good piece for recruiting in that regard. They can immediately use what they bring over. It's just, you know, it's that, it's the cumulative payout piece, you know, that everybody has options to, that they, that it would impact. And quite honestly, all, everybody has that option now. That's not differentiated, the payout. It's just that individuals that transfer to us get to bring what they've already earned with them, and we feel like they should be able to do that.
That's something that county's been doing for years in their policy, so.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I think, if I recall, in the needs that we had in human resources, our biggest need, if you were going by ratio, was in our support staff.
We have a significant need in those areas, certainly.
That would be good for recruiting.
One hundred percent. And that's all I have for this evening.
And I'm assuming that you're going to let us look at it and would maybe like us to consider this at the next meeting?
Well, I will provide that to you. It's a regulation, so it's not necessarily a voted option, but it certainly is something we want to have your graces on, since it is a regulation that we utilize to implement benefit practices for our staff. But being a regulation, those are the modifications. Please do take time. I won't act on it until I hear back that you all feel comfortable with that, unless you're comfortable tonight for us to move forward and don't have any other direction for us.
And thank you for clarifying about the regulation.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
So Board, how do you want to proceed? Do you want to move forward with this tonight, or do you want to move it to the next meeting?
I'm comfortable to move forward, Madam Chair.
Got several, so I guess I just need a motion on the floor if we've got some folks that want to move forward.
I don't think he needs a motion. He's just looking for consensus, right?
Consensus.
Yeah, yeah. I'll shake my head.
All right, so they're good?
All shaking our heads?
All right, we have the shaking head consensus. We'll take that.
Got a shaking head consensus. Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So next, we have information from our student representatives. Fatima's not with us this evening, but Evan is with us tonight, so I'll turn it over to Evan, and he can speak about what's going on at the high school.
Hi. For those listening online, that's a lot. For those listening online, my name is Evan Fink. I am a student representative for Amherst County High School. Sadly, a member of my cohort, Fatima Arami Grace, is not here today. I'll be speaking in her stead about some of the things she told me that she wanted to bring up today. To start, to start, the first thing I would like to talk about is dual enrollment. I know personally, it was a big boon to me, but being a, enrolled at CBCC, I get many opportunities, such as the opportunity to be a CBCC ambassador. Yesterday, I toured around a group of ten freshmen, of the one hundred and eighty-five that actually came there that day. And it was a great time getting to know and inform them of the opportunities that they had over there that they didn't know about. I know personally, whenever I first came to Amherst County High School, that I was unaware of many of the opportunities that were laid out for me. So I think it's important to get the word out to many people there that this is possible and that it's a great opportunity. And I think it should be told to them more commonly, starting from ninth grade, because it's not just something you decide to apply in a way. I mean, you need to work hard for it. You need to progress. You need to, it's not just something that anybody who applies to get in, you need to work. You need to work hard. You need to get the right place, the right time, the right mindset. And on to some of the things that Fatima wanted to talk about, that I actually share, Show Up Day. She was one of the cheerleaders who went to Amherst Elementary, and, or rather, Madison Heights Elementary. And it was a great time. They got to talk with the kids for a few hours, and they were really encouraged, and she loved, and she very enjoyed it, and she was excited to see if they have it again. And then another event coming up is a trunk-or-treat, I believe. Yes, the trunk-or-treat where seniors are going to decorate their trunks, and the community's going to come around, and it's going to be a great time. They're going to give out candy, food prizes, and it's October thirtieth, between three and five, I believe, before a football game. And the next thing she wanted to talk about was her dance team that's going on. On the A-team, there are a total of twelve members in total, and they're very excited about performing during games like the basketball games coming up, baseball, other festivals, and parades, community events. And another event that's actually going on, a lot with school spirit, is the Power to Puff game in November. And yeah, other than that, I mean, all school activities are going great this year. I know that with the football team, doing pretty well right now. So we're looking forward to Rustburg tomorrow night. Hopefully, we can kick them at the football game. Their homecoming game, in fact. And other than that, I mean, school spirit's been up a lot since last year, with lockdowns, with restrictions lifted. I think it's coming back to pre-COVID levels. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Fink.
Thank you. Next, I have superintendent matters. So I want to start with the VSBA award certificates. So some of you have earned VSBA certificates and/or pins. So Ms. Thompson has an excellence award. Ms. Ligon has the excellence award. Ms. Berg has the achievement award, and Ms. Justice has a recognition award. Y'all should have certificates and/or pins at your place regarding those. So congratulations to those awards, and hopefully, we'll get some more of those going this year as we go to more and more meetings. So I just want to recognize you for that. Supervisor, superintendent's advisory council update. I met September, I mean, October sixth last week, October sixth, and we had our first meeting, and it was, I felt it was a very productive meeting. We had representatives from all the schools here. We had the AEA reps here, and they just were able to share the positives, as well as share some, have some questions regarding what is, what we're doing. One of the things I did bring up was the COVID leave, which y'all approved tonight, so I thank you for doing that. And then they also had questions regarding lesson plans and things of that nature, which, you know, I was waiting for a meeting with the state yesterday, and I'll go into that more bit later, but they had some general questions, but overall, the feeling was very positive. We're trying to take the energy from this, and, you know, if they have concerns, let's not just, let's make it where we can move a direction and solve problems, as opposed to just bringing problems forward. The goal is to, if there's issues, let's work to fix them, and let's have committees, subcommittees in this group to start working towards some questions or some concerns they have. So we had our first meeting. We'll meet again in about a month, and we'll continue moving that forward. We also held our first diversity council meeting on October third. Again, very good discussion. We reviewed the priorities and objectives of the committee from last year, and then made some steps moving forward as to what our priorities will be for this year, moving as we go through this year. So I felt very good about that. We had citizen reps. We have school reps and central office staff on that as well. So I felt that was another productive meeting last week, and we're going to continue to meet and move that forward. Next thing I have is the resolution of respect for Mr. Edgar Fitzgerald. Mr. Fitzgerald served on the school board from July first, nineteen sixty-three, to June thirtieth, nineteen seventy-four. He passed on September seventeenth of this year. I've been in contact with the family, and one thing they've told me is he was very proud of his service on the board and to the community. We would recommend that we do a resolution at the November board meeting. I'll be glad to communicate with the family to have them here. So if you're also moved, then I would, we'll go ahead and get started on that resolution, have it, they can present to the family in November.
Madam Chair, make a motion that we approve the draft and the resolution for Mr. Fitzgerald?
Motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Okay, thank you. Next thing on my list are the tailgates. Some of you have, I've had the joy of serving y'all some hamburgers and hot dogs at the tailgates. We had a middle school and elementary schools have already had theirs. I want to thank my staff and everybody who's been engaged in this for being there and being present for that. Brittany's done a lot of work on it. Gary's been moving stuff back and forth. Dr. Hoden's moved stuff back and forth. So I do thank everybody that's been engaged in this process and being there. I know Jim's been throwing a football a lot and been having some fun time there. So, but I do, we have our next one on the twenty-first that is also homecoming, and this will be primarily for our secondary, for our high school and AEC staff, as well as other staff who haven't been able to come to any of the other events. So we are encouraging any staff member who has not been able to attend one of these tailgates to come on that one event, but the primary focus of this one is for the high school and AEC, and then our staff there. I encourage you to come to it if you can. We'll have hamburgers, hot dogs. It may be cool enough to have some hot chocolate this time. We've tried to have hot chocolate twice. It's been seventy-five degrees, both tailgates, which isn't a bad thing, but it's kind of hard to have hot chocolate going when it's seventy-five. So we'll see what next week brings, hopefully some good weather. But we do encourage you, if you can, to come to that, and again, our staff to come there. I think it's been very, I've enjoyed it, interacting with folks. I've been sitting by the grill. I've been on the grill most of the time, but having conversations, I've really enjoyed doing this, and we look forward to doing the next one. And I appreciate those of you who have been able to come to it. Show Up Day, we had our first Show Up Day, September thirtieth. Show-up day, we had our first show-up day, September 30th. I was able to get to all the schools, made it to all schools at least once, some schools twice. You know, we had events going on at Amherst Middle School. They had like a public service appreciation event going on, where we had sheriff's office, had game wardens, state police, had the bomb techs there from the state police. Game warden brought the boat. Sheriff's office brought the tactical team with the MRAP. We have other fire EMS folks there. So it was great, and the kids came out, and they rotated through each station for about 20 minutes apiece, were able to talk to the representative who was there, and kind of talk about that career for a little bit, and just ask questions, and then kind of get a feel for that, and also give their appreciation for those folks who are doing the jobs they do. So it was good for that. I think it was a good event there. Amherst Elementary School in Temperance, we had a couple administrators get some pies to the face that day, and some students that had good attendance were drawn out to do that, and throw some pies to the faces of some principals and some staff there. Volleyball team went to Temperance Elementary School, and were able to get the tunnel the football team runs through, so all the kids got to go run through the tunnel going into the gym. And the volleyball team was there to interact with the students throughout the day. At Madison Heights Elementary School, the football team, for the football team to go, they had to have an A or B in all their classes, and not have any attendance issues. So we were able to send several of our football players and the cheerleaders down to Madison Heights, and they were out there interacting with the students. We had some good pictures of our football players swinging on the swing with the kids and stuff, and climbing on the monkey bars, and just throwing football back and forth with the students and with the elementary students. So I thought that was another, a very good day. The kids were excited, but I also feel it was a very positive event for our high school students, because they were able to interact with those students more. So I felt that was a very good event. Our goal is to do more of these throughout the year. We're going to have one more in the spring, where it's a announce day. But also, each school is encouraged to have some type of event every month that focuses on showing up, school attendance, whatever that may be. So each school's kind of been tasked with that, to do an individual thing throughout the month, based on their attendance data, and what they think will be good. You don't have to spend a lot of money. We could have, you know, they want to have one of the teams coming down to their school. It's nothing to put them on a bus and take them over there for half, you know, for a couple hours during the day, as long as they're doing well in their classes and things of that nature. So we're not talking about spending lots of money, but we're all talking about doing things that are incentives to the students to come to school. But we felt very good about that. Ms. Petrow, anything you want to add?
I would just add that it was a fantastic day, but we also awarded gift cards to teachers who were showing up. So we went into several of the buildings, and whoever was there, we drew names, and they got an award just because they're showing up for their kids every day. And not just teachers, but custodians, and there was cafeteria and nutrition workers, so bus drivers. I went to the bus garage at the end of the day, and we just randomly pulled a couple names and gave out gift cards to folks who show up.
Thank you. So the next thing on my list was the JRA trips. We, the seventh graders at Amherst Middle School, Melson, both were able to do their JRA trips. We did those about two weeks ago, two or three weeks ago. And if you saw my newsletter, some of the Amherst Middle School students had the great privilege of being there the same day the game commission was doing a fish shocking survey in the river. And they were shocking up these 20 to 40-pound flathead catfish and other fish, and the kids got to engage in that process a little bit on the shore when they brought them in, and hold them up, and see that. So it was a pretty good experience for them to see that as well, just great timing. I wish we could do that with all the groups, but some of the Amherst Middle School students were able to see that and see the environmental science being put to, you know, applied, not just read about it in a book. They got to see it actually in action, which I think was good for them. So next, I want to get into the video we monitoring. So I'm just going to hit a few talking points we have here. So I'll save the heavy stuff towards the end. So we met yesterday. Our staff met with the state via a Zoom meeting. It was myself, Dr. Norman, Mr. Neighbors, Ms. Smith, Mr. Maddox, Ms. McNerney, Dr. McGinnis, Ms. Wheeler, and Ms. Cecil. And we were there. They gave us kind of their overview of what we needed to do for the Office of School Quality. We told them what we were doing, what our data indicated. We've already sent it to them, so they already had a chance to see it. And they asked, you know, they asked us for that plans for improvement implementation. We discussed, the Office of School Quality is going to do spring virtual meetings with all Level III schools. We're going to provide support and framing feedback to schools. We're going to have, we told them we have a liaison for each school, which we talked about earlier tonight, connecting division instructional rounds, which we talked about earlier tonight, the division review of comprehensive school improvement plans, and the monitoring quarterly with feedback. So they were, they were very much in agreement with those items and how we were dealing with what, you know, where we are. They didn't really say, do this or do that, which I would rather them come in and say, kind of, hey, give me some direct feedback. They didn't give me direct. They just kind of said, well, that sounds like a good idea, or this, as opposed to, y'all need to do this. So we're putting, we're proposing things to them. They're giving us feedback on it, and we'll move forward with that. I did ask them about lesson plans, and lesson review, and lesson implementation. They did state that was a division decision. However, they encouraged us to look at the research about lesson plan and review and feedback and implementation, or essential parts of quality instruction. So, you know, if we have, we know our, we know some of our students had learning loss, or had gaps in their knowledge, however you want to phrase that. So I think it's important for our teachers to really look at, if they have a student that has that gap in knowledge, how are they going to make that learning loss up, or bring that gap forward, and overcome that loss of learning? So the lesson plans really need to focus on those students that have those, may have some deficiencies in their learning, just based off the fact that they may not have learned that material. So we need to really look at the planning process to identify those areas that are in need, and how are we going to incorporate that into our lessons so we focus on all those kids, not just the other 15 who may not have learning loss, but what about those six or seven who have, we know they have deficiencies some, one place or another, and how are we going to incorporate that, so they get caught up, so we can get that learning back to where it needs to be. So that's a focus we need to think about as we look at our lesson plan development. So, you know, what I plan to do moving forward is move going to each school, and talking to each faculty about what is, what the expectations are. They need to hear it from me, and what I feel we need to do moving forward to get us to where we're improving across the board. And they need to know what's, they need to know my expectations again. I told them at the, earlier in the year at the convocation, I think it's important for me to go back out to schools now, have had a chance to talk to the state, and understand exactly what the expectations are, and what the requirements are going to be. And they need to hear that from me. So I'm going to be the one going and doing that. So I'm starting to schedule those meetings here in the next week or two. It might take me three or four weeks to get to all the schools, because they all tend to have faculty meetings at the same time, or on the same days, so I can't be in multiple places. So I might be talking to some schools about rescheduling some of their meetings to make it more accommodating for me to get there, but I will be in all the schools, talking to the faculties with expectations, and then taking questions from staff, and do my best to answer those questions. So just want to give you an idea there of where we are on that. We have another meeting on October 20th, and then we'll get more information from the state there as well, moving forward. But again, these meetings were, they were informative, but they really weren't quite what I was hoping to get out of the meeting, so to speak. But anyway, enough on that. Bridging the Gap. Bridging the Gap is another initiative we're joining in, we're joining in with the state. We had a meeting yesterday afternoon as well. So we went straight from the Office of School Quality from 2:30 to 4:00, to 4:00 to 4:45 with the Bridging the Gap meeting. And this right here is talking about developing individualized learning plans for students, and that's something the state is doing with this pilot program. And so on the pilot, they're giving us the discretion, it's focused on grades three through eight. What we know so far is that we can pick the grade level. We can even narrow it down to a certain school if we want to, and figure out how we're going to develop these individualized learning plans. And that's something the state is going to. We're in the pilot program. It's us and about 15 other school divisions across the state. And then I think next year, you're going to see it pushed out more so across the state, but we're still in the figuring out process on that. We haven't seen the MOU yet. We haven't seen some of those other things yet, but the state's starting to have these meetings. So as I get more information on Bridging the Gap, I'll bring it to you. But the focus is on developing individualized learning plans, and involving the parents in the decision-making process with the students, and what their goals and objectives are, which we should be doing to an extent anyway. But I think the big question's going to be the amount of work. We don't know the amount of work that's going to be involved in developing these plans yet, because we haven't seen it. So that's going to be part of the, part of the process, I think, in trying to figure all this out. But I don't know, I don't have that answer yet. Once I do, I'll let you know. Town Planning Commission, we met with the Town Planning Commission, the Town Council over the past two weeks regarding the project at the high school. Presented, Mr. Roaks, Dr. Hoden, myself presented with the Town Planning Commission last week, and the Town Council last night, right? Last night? My days are getting run together. They've been very, they were very appreciative of us coming to them, but we do need to look at the high school, how it's zoned. It's zoned as a residential. And as the town took it over from the county, they never changed the zoning. So we need, we're going, we've been working with Sarah McGuffin and the town on getting it rezoned to a B2, so we can do more things at the school, and trying to get other stuff done. Also talking about taking over Lancer Lane and things like that, being under our control versus VDOT control. So a few things there. We don't anticipate any roadblocks. They've been very, the conversations went very well with them, but we do, there is a process. So next month, we will bring it to their, to them for the Planning Commission in November, and we hope that it'll be approved by December for them to change the zoning for the high school property to meet the needs. Now, especially since the Burley property is now part of our property, we can always own it as one, one big block, as opposed to multiple different zoning blocks in there. So the last thing I have is library media book adoption to sexually explicit content conversation. So at your place, you should have, is it on board docs, correct, or is their place? Is that their place? They should have a policy, the draft policy that Mr. Maddox and Mr. Grazer in the committee we formed or have been working on. Then you also have a V SBA policy that is basically coincides with that, because when we started the process, we did not have a V SBA policy. So as you remember, the state is going to require, the state code requires us to have this in place by January 1st. So we started working in September on a draft policy for the sexually explicit content. Last week, we received the V SBA policy, which basically parallels the policy we've been working on. It's the same thing. So what we're going to do now is take both those policies, I want one for you to review, but we'll take both those policies, the draft policy and the V SBA policy, go back to the committee next week, discuss that, and make a decision as to whether we recommend presenting the draft policy to you, that's an Amherst County Public Schools policy, or the V SBA policy. Remember, V SBA, if it's, if they're saying the same thing, the V SBA might be the way to go, because then you have protections under the V SBA. But again, that's going to be, that'll be up to the board and so forth, as we bring that forward. We will bring both forward to you. The one thing I did notice is that in our policy, we had a 15-day notice period, and conversations with the state, and some of the conferences I've been on regarding this policy, the recommendation at the state level is that it's a 30-day. And by, as you read the code, it says we can't, we have to be, if we do our own policy, it has to be consistent with the model policy. So we can be more restrictive, but we can't be less restrictive. So I feel we're going to have to go to, our policy will have a 30-day window in there as well, to be in alignment with the model policy. We could go to 45 days if we wanted, but we couldn't go less than 30. So we will have to adjust that 15-day to a 30-day in our draft. But other than that, if you read both, I think you'll see they're both pretty much saying the same, same thing, for the most part. So, that being said, are there any questions, if anything I've gone over tonight?
Madam Chair, I had a chance to look over the policy for the instructional materials, and there were a couple things that I noticed. One is they include the definition of sexually explicit content, which is all according to code. They remove social media content from instructional, instructional, the purpose is it would not cover social media, yet social media is a part of our students' lives, and sometimes is being used by instructors. I don't see any kind of a rating. I see notice that something's going to be taught, but I don't see anything about books that are in our library. I have me and Earl and the dying girl here, and, you know, I, you know...
So the first thing we did, we had to address the sexually explicit content policy, which has to be in effect by January 1. The other part of that was the regulation that's going to go into the media, books in the libraries and the media centers. But our focus initially was to focus on getting the policy written. And now, once the policy draft has been written, we're going to start working on the library media books, and how that regulation's going to work. But we had to have a policy in place, because that was the one that has to come to you to be passed, and be in place by January 1. The rest, the media books and things of that nature, we can, we're going to start working on that now, as we're moving forward from now throughout the year, to come up with the regulations for that. And we anticipate that being sometime into December, January timeframe.
So in that regulation, if we don't, if we only include in our policy the suggestion that we allow parents to know what sexually explicit material is being included, I know that some of the other districts have included a parental opt-in, and I think that that should probably be, I personally think that should be a part of our policy, if we're going to include sexually explicit material, which, "Any description of any picture, photograph, drawing, motion picture, film, digital image, or similar visual representation depicting sexual bestiality, allude exhibition of nudity, as nudity is defined in Section 18.2-390, sexual excitement, sexual conduct, or sadomasochistic abuse, as also defined in Section 18.2-390, coprophilia, europhilia, or fetishism." If any of that is going to be in our instructional materials, I think we should probably have parental opt-in rather than a notification. So we have a lot of parents, as we all know, who are concerned about this, and rightly so. And I certainly, as a board member, don't want to have a parent come to me and say, well, I got a notification that it was sexually explicit, and this is what my kid had, you know, and you guys said it was okay for instructional material. And I'm not certain that sexually explicit content is it? By this definition of what sexually explicit content is, I'm not certain that is something we consider instructional.
Well, I think that's good feedback, Mrs. Justice. I will say that I know that we have a minimum that we have to do in this draft, in our policy. If it was an opt-in, then I think that would be going above and beyond, and certainly within our right to what we could do as a board, if we wanted to do that. I would support that, you know, at this point, but I guess we just need to be talking about that and giving some guidance. I don't know how other board members feel about that or not.
Mr. Grazer, you've been in the meetings. Do you have any?
The, I think with the notification, for one, that, you know, you're assuming that that stuff's going to be taught. The definition came out of what's in the state code. I mean, there's no changing that whatsoever. So if you don't like bestiality mentioned, it's in state code, talk to your general assembly. As far as the opt-in, I think the parents, they're going to get a notification on the, on the content. I don't, I think opt-ins always, especially if a teacher's, and I don't believe this is even going to come up, I mean, I really don't, just knowing our staff, I don't think, but we have this policy in place because of the requirement. I think to sit there and put a opt-in, or I think you put an extra burden on staff to sit back and wait. If something comes along that may even cross over into this threshold, I think that staff is sitting there waiting for parents. So if a parent is just as concerned about what their child is doing, they're going to see that notice and opt them out. So if they're not concerned, who's going to say they're even going to opt them in? So, you know, I just, I really do think, at the end of the day, that notification is absolutely necessary. To put an opt-in into it, I just, I just think that's a unnecessary step. If it is agreed, I think it's something that goes in the regulation, and not necessarily a policy thing. a policy thing. I think that's a regulatory, a regulation thing or procedure rather than something that needs to be in the policy. But I'm open to whatever the board wants to do as a whole, so.
Yeah, reviewing in our instructional materials, there, there are very few times that you're going to see anything and the, you may have something with a dual enrollment CBCC class where the CBC, you know, it's part of that instruction, but typically you're not going to see much of this happening at, in the schools. So, I can't say it never has happened, but I, I think, you know, sometimes you may have a CBCC dual enrollment course where a teacher has, is reading a certain, certain book or certain text. But it's, it's very, it's a very small amount. It's not an everyday occurrence in our schools, I will say that. But we'll take your, we've noted your recommendations and we will take it, Mr. Maddox is sitting back there, and he'll take it and his, to his committee next week when we meet, and we'll bring it as a point of conversation.
And Mr. Grazer, just to, to your point about it being in the regulation, I, I think I'm going to have to disagree with you because the policy that we're looking at specifically says that it would be a letter out. So it clarifies the, the how-to. So you wouldn't want a regulation that was different than the policy how-to. So that would have to be vetted and.
I can see that.
Determine where it would be placed, I think. So they're not conflicting.
So we'll take your, your points of conversation tonight, bring it to the committee next week, and then we'll bring something back to you. We do need to get you something in November as a first read, and then hopefully for approval in December, if we can agree to that. If there's something in November that you don't agree with, you think we need to change, we'll need to work on that throughout the month and make adjustments, and we will get things through to you throughout the month. So hopefully by December, we can have something for approval so we will meet the, the state requirement of a January 1, having a policy in place.
And I'd also like to reiterate the piece about taking out the social media or the online access. I'm not sure why that was taken out, but is there any explanation as to why maybe?
I think in the conversation, we, there was, if my recollection is correct, we kind of, it was already covered by some existing, I think, digital. I apologize, I don't have it opened up in front of me. But that, yeah, we, we already felt through the conversation, and we had actually one of our members an attorney. So we, you know, we're just having a conversation with that. We felt it was already covered and encapsulated.
Digital?
Yes.
Madam Chair, does it hurt to have it mentioned in both?
I know in the VSBA policy, they have it mentioned. They, they list, they don't remove it, they keep social media in the VSBA version. So it's, it doesn't hurt, but again, I think some of the committee felt it was redundant and therefore they took it out.
Madam Chair, how does, how does the board feel about a rating rubric being included so parents can kind of have a general idea of what the level of sexual content is in
Madam Chair, one, you would have to consider what's your source, because it's a very subjective process. One, I have confidence in the, in the staff that we put in those positions to make a determination whether or not, initially upon their review, that something may meet the classification in here. And we also have a process in place, if someone doesn't agree with that, of how to, how to review that. So a rubric from a website that has, that wouldn't even be included probably as a reference in a research paper or considered peer-reviewed, I don't think is a good thing. I think it puts an undue burden on the staff for one. And again, it's very subjective. A parent could obviously not agree with what that rating is, so, so they can, you know, what's to say they couldn't appeal that? I think, I think trying to put that, the one that you're referencing, like you had submitted, it was very, it, it made it very complex to try to do anything that's not applicable, or we were trying to figure out how you could apply it to all of those mediums. I think the, just trying to encapsulate that, we, as a committee, we just reviewing that, we didn't think it was a very good thing to put into place, and I still stand by that. I think we, we have staff that we entrust that are, that are educated, that are put in that position to make that determination on this material. And we also, to retroactively go back and review everything in that library that's, you know, you know, I just, or instruction material, I, I, I don't think that that's, I don't think that's the route we need to go. I really, I just don't. I, I think we have processes in place to address these concerns and to try to put something in such as that rating system. I just don't think it, I don't think it would be fruitful for, for what the, what we're trying to do here, so.
I, I would add that what we possibly could add to the letter would be, so for example, if they're reading a book and it is sexually explicit, it talked about sex acts, then they could put in the letter, the book covers acts between a married couple or whatever, or they could put some, some definition in there so that parents would know what is being discussed and how it's being discussed if there was a case to do that, as opposed to just saying sexually explicit material. I think we could get a little bit more specific into what that is to give the parents a little better idea of what, what it is that's going to be, that's discussed in that, in that material. I wouldn't be opposed to that, but I think we could work through those with, with the regulation and what the expectations are for our staff and how they send that letter home.
Absolutely.
So give the, give the parent more information and allow them, that information to be readily available if they dig in.
Correct.
I mean, I personally don't think that that material needs to be there, but I, my main concern is access to students at age appropriate. I mean, you know, you can have a third grader in a library and pick up a middle school book that's, you know, middle schooler, and a parent in a middle schooler may not think it's that big of a deal, but in the hands of an elementary student. So those are some of my concerns and how to address those, I'm not quite sure, but I'm sure the committee will come up with some good ideas on how to do that.
Madam Chair, maybe if we have a list of the books that people are uncomfortable with, if we hand that over to our librarians and let them review those books, and maybe they could maybe set them aside or something and only be available upon request or something like that.
Good ideas. Okay, looking forward to see what the committee's got. Thanks for listening to some of our thoughts.
That's, that's all I have, unless you have any more questions for me.
Other questions?
All right, thank you.
Okay, let's see. We are for committee members, I see Mrs. Leggins, you have a report from Laurel?
Oh, let me think.
And, or VSBA?
No Laurel report. I'll just combine all my things. For VSBA, I will be sending out the legislative position that to be voted on. I'll have them to you before the next meeting. I think I have them here, but they're a little unorganized right now. It's been, I'll get them out to you, I'm going to break Monday, Tuesday, so I'll try to get that to each member so we can talk about them on the November meeting.
I know that there are some.
Got them right here.
Virtual meetings that are coming up, that they're going to be discussing some of those.
Well, the virtual meeting is just, yeah, the virtual meeting is just showing me how to vote, which I already know how to do that. But before I vote on anything, I'll bring these to the whole board at the November meeting. I'll get them out to you before the board meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Leggins.
Do we ask questions regarding this or no, at this time?
If I can answer, I will.
Okay. One question I have is, is it possible to have a work session where we can talk about those in more, in more depth?
Well, I don't know about a work session, we never have, but I'm going to try to get them out to you a month ahead. I mean, the meeting is not until November, what's the date in Williamsburg?
The middle 15?
Yeah, 15, 16, 17.
I just had Brittany copy it for me a couple of weeks ago. I'll have, try to have them to you to look at this week. I mean, I said this week, next week.
And if, if any other board members would like to go, we can still make arrangements for, I believe Brittany, can't we?
Oh, it's not just delegates?
We're talking about two different things.
Two different things.
The VSBA conference in Williamsburg is in November, in the middle of November. And part of that is there is a session in which the delegates, Mrs. Leggins being our delegate, will go and actually vote.
But I'll get everything to you that's going to be voted on, so you can tell me what you want me to say. That's what I'm saying.
Then in November, we'll look at it and we'll tell her if we want her to vote yes or no on this.
So we'll have discussion then, you think? Okay.
Yeah, I think we could. And, yes. And/or contact her or me or whoever.
Well, I mean, we'll put it on the agenda. We'll put it on, on agenda for, for November. You will have had these in your possession for a minute. I wouldn't call a meeting to do them unless you think we need to. It'd probably be.
I've reviewed them, I don't know that we do, but.
But I'm going to get them to everybody anyhow, and I'll try my best to have them to you next week.
So would you like a discussion item then, in November regarding?
Yeah, you can put it on there on the agenda for November.
We can do that. Okay.
And, let's see, the other thing is, yes, I did tell to all the great spirit we have in the county, the tailgating, the show-up Amherst, everything has been wonderful. I will announce also, other than the VSBA, no Laurel meeting at this time, that I am in the process of hiring a new head start director, which we do have a lot to do with that here in the county. We have a, Madison Heights has a head start classrooms, and they are, the children are doing quite well there. We hope to have a head start director in the next 25 days or so. Hope to have a new CEO of Linkag next week. So those also are part of us. And other than that, just all the good news tonight. I've kind of been down this road before, and we do come out of it with good hard work. So I want to thank everyone that's already beginning. There's a lot, we, we could say there's a lot of work to be done, but I have faith that we've got good people in, in charge of doing it, as long as you keep us abreast. We do whatever we can. Achieving, I mean, closing achievement gaps and, and all these sort of things is easier said than done, but I didn't say they couldn't be done, so we're, we're looking to help as much as we can. I think that's all I have, Madam Chair, except kudos to all people working and Lancer information. And yes, we're going to try to go down to Red Devil territory tomorrow. If at all possible.
Thank you, Mrs. Leggins. Mr. Grazer?
Gov School Board didn't meet in October, will be meeting again in November. And then, Dr. Wells has already briefed you on the Library Media Committee information. Thank Mr. Burley for his generosity and continued to report, or support of Amherst County Public School programs, and thank everybody for the information tonight.
Mr. Terry, STEM Academy.
So STEM Academy has not met since our last meeting. And as far as my report for a board member, I have to echo what Mr. Grazer said, Mr. Burley. You know, he's supported this county by more than just his finances. If we had more citizens like him, we would be in a really, a, a great place. And not financially, I'm just talking about his moral and emotional support for our entire county. He's a phenomenal person. And, and I hope the, the two people who came to speak about the, the road issue that we're potentially looking at going into Monellison, it, it appears from the drawings that I've seen that the actual easement will actually, you know, ease some, some of the traffic there on Daniel's Lane. I hope that's the case. I mean, it, it looks like it will be. So I hope the, the gentlemen were able to rest their minds with those. And I'll reiterate, Dr. Norman, again, thanks for owning the situation. Your team has done a great job presenting the data and giving us a, a path forward. Like Ms. Leggins said, you know, it's, 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 it's a lot to be done, but, you know, we'll get through this. It's going to be, when we see it come out on the other side, I think we'll be in a much better place. So thank you all for your, your due diligence. Shout out to, you know, one of the things that stuck out, that you were talking about, teachers helping teachers. And I, you know, I just want to make sure that they recognize that we hear that and, you know, we encourage it. We want to know that coworkers are helping coworkers. Might not be able to do everything they need, but stepping up where they can, just because they're there. And you never know who's going to need the support tomorrow. So glad to hear that that's a, that's really a thing. And, you know, like has already been said, the show-up Amherst and the, the tailgate stuff, it's, it's, it's great camaraderie when you get the teachers and everybody together and social setting and administration together in a social setting and not dealing with the everyday work aspect of being together. That's an important thing. We are a community, but we're more than a community, we're, we're family. And that's, it just goes a long way. So thank everyone who's been participating, thank everyone who's helped put them on, and maybe we'll get a win next time, got our fingers crossed, but it's all good. We love going and supporting our, our football team in the evenings, and thank you all, everybody.
Mrs. Burke, do you have anything tonight?
Nothing to report, but I would like to say thank you to our speakers this evening. A big special thank you to Mr. Burley for his donation to our Wildcats archery team. Thank you to the speakers on that actually came out and answered questions for those people on Daniel's Drive on the Monellison easement. Also, thank you to Mr. Gallagher for putting together another sick leave benefit package for our teachers. I'm sure they all will appreciate that and our staff. Dr. Wells, I'd like to thank you for sharing everything on the show-up Amherst. It sounded like everything was wonderful and everybody had a good time, and we really need to build everybody back after the whole COVID couple of years. And also, thank you to Mr. Fink for holding everything down over there by yourself tonight and staying with us all night. And a special thank you to our teachers. We support you, we appreciate you. You know, let us know what we can do to help you out, to help our students, to get us through this little patch and get us back on top. Thank you.
Burke? Mrs. Justice?
I was so blessed by Mr. Burley's giving to our community. To me, it typified the heart for our kids and how our kids inspire the generations that have come before. If you could have been up here and seen Mr. Burley's eyes glow when he looked at those kids and spoke hope into their lives, it was, it was inspiring. And he's not alone. I think he represents many people that are out there that maybe don't speak it, but they feel it. Thank you, Dr. Wells, for reaching out to the Daniel Street neighborhood and giving them a voice and an opportunity to be heard and have their questions answered. The tailgates and show-up Amherst have been phenomenal. I have loved participating in them, meeting the staff, talking with the kids. I'm loving being in the schools and telling kids, when they say, "Who, what do you do?" I say, "I work for your parents." They're my boss. And they go, "You too? How do you know my parents?" And I get a chance to tell them, "I'm an elected school official, and it's your parents that tell me what to do." Parents, this might not be as pleasant. Parents, these are your kids, and the Library Commission is needing to hear from you. Do you think it's too complicated to have a rating that says a book that considers has moderate violence, moderate hate, inexplicit sexual nudity and sexual activities, or gender ideologies, or drug and alcohol use appropriate or not for 13, a rating of two? Or do you think that A Court of Mist and Fury, which is rated at a four, which is explicit sexual nudity, depictions of sexual organs in a state of arousal, obscene references to sexual activities involving anal or vaginal intercourse, fingering, antifungus, or ejaculation is appropriate to have in your school libraries? Is that something that you feel you should be opting into or not? I don't know if a content-based rating is something that you feel is necessary. Your committee wants to know. They want to hear from you. Their heart is to serve the kids and their community and not to inhibit any parents' preferences for their kids. But they need to hear from you. So the books that I have quoted from are books that are in our libraries. A Court of Mist and Fury, you have The Kite Runner, you have Me, Earl and the Dying Girl. So those are just a few. We don't have many, but they're there, and you need to communicate. We don't have many, but they're there. And you need to communicate what you want your board to do.
Justice, Mr. Rossi?
All right. First, Mr. Fink, thank you for showing up. The work that you do and bringing the freshmen out to the school and showing them around and, and talking to them, the impact that you have on them is very, very important. I like your leadership skill and, and moving things forward. I don't know which one has to check the chlorine at the pool, but, you know, you're a mentor without, you know, being graduated. You're working your way up and taking those children and showing them what a good leader is and how important it is, because they're going to be in your shoes in four years, you know, as they, as they work their way up. And you're going to leave stuff on them. And I, I appreciate that you're taking the time to do that. I, I wasn't as fortunate when I was a senior to have that opportunity, but you have an opportunity and I hope you use it, use it well. Thank you. Mr. Burley, for the donation for the archery team. I'm impartial to archery. Archery is one of those sports where it doesn't matter how physically fit you are. It doesn't matter if you're a boy or a girl. You can compete against anybody on that field. And it's a great sport for everyone. And the discipline, obviously, safety. And for our schools to have that opportunity, because I didn't have that opportunity when I was a young child. I wish I did, but I didn't. But to have that here in Amherst is, is a good, a good show of how much the community cares about our students. Archery is, is actually growing in popularity, and I think it's for those reasons, because it is a competitive sport, and it doesn't matter on race, gender, it doesn't matter. Everyone can compete and be competitive in what they do. So it teaches them great skills. Show-up Amherst, wow, Dr. Wells, you've taken it a long, long way. And I haven't had a burger that good in a long time, let's say. You know, to, to take the extra effort to bring out the charcoal instead of turning it on to propane. I mean, it, it just shows the thought process and how you're committed to it. And that's, you know, why you're where you're at now, because of your commitment. And I don't want to try to place anything against you on that. You're, you're committed 100%. And I know that, and I, as a board member, committed to you and to the teachers and to the students of the school. You know, it was an amazing event, and I hope that everybody gets an opportunity to get out there and enjoy that. That is, it's a very special moment. And to see the pergola that were built by the students, that was phenomenal work. The hardscaping, everything was just, wow. I was very, very impressed. Yeah, and then the game didn't quite go our way, but that's all right. Everything else was, was just phenomenal out there. And I'm looking forward to the next one.
Thank you.
And everybody, I, there's a lot of work in here, but it's just work. It's work. You know, it's got to get done, you know? Do we have all the answers? No. I, I don't think we do. We have a direction. Thank you for all the hard work. We have a direction to go. We have a goal, goal in mind. And with the people in the school and what I'm hearing from the community and teachers and students, this momentum is still moving forward. And, and it's just, I don't think that anything in here is going to stop us achieving our goals. I just don't see it happening. We're, we're going to move forward. And I think that our best years are yet to come. And I know we've been through a lot of years, but I think the best years are yet to come. And I think with this team, we're going to get there. We might get there a little bit sooner than we think, but we're getting there. And thank you all for everything. I really see it. I really see the difference. And it's very much appreciated. Thank you.
Mr. Rossi?
Well, I know it's getting late, so I'll just try to keep it very, very brief. I just want to say thank you to the teachers and the staff for getting us through some really tough years. I can't say that any of us would have ever imagined we would be here today, where we have come from and what our children have been through. And we have had a phenomenal staff, teachers, that have gotten us through those tough times. So when I sit here and I look at the work that you guys have put together with our data, yeah, it's not the data we want to see, but it's reality. It's where we are after coming out of those tough times. And so I know, like Mrs. Leggins has said, we've been here before. The hard work has been done. And she and I have seen the accomplishments that this staff has made. And I know that we have the confidence that it will occur again. So it does take team effort. A lot of work has already gone into this, and I know a lot of work will continue. So I just want to say that we have confidence in you, those that I'm looking at here in the room. I also say that we have confidence to every teacher and everybody that is employed in Amherst County, as well as the parents and the students. We can do this. We are Team Amherst, and we've done it before. So, and I want to thank Dr. Wells because you're taking the lead and you're getting in those schools and you're talking and setting expectations. And I appreciate that very much. And I know that you are already swamped with the work you have to do. And you're going to be looking at every single school and every piece of data and every single student's name. And that's what it's going to take. So I just appreciate that very much. So thank you, team. And then I also want to say thank you, Mr. Greiser, for serving on the sexually explicit material committee. I know that's a, a tough one, but in the same vein, I know you want to get it right, and our staff will do the same. So thank you for listening to the comments tonight and moving forward. I think that we will have a good product as we come out of that. So, and I want to thank Mr. Burley for his donation, for the archery team, and Mr. Fink, I really enjoyed your ideas, but I really loved your radio voice. Really nice. And so team, board, I want to remind you that if you have instructional things that you want to send to the board, to the staff, to send them through me, and I'll summarize them and get them to there. Give you two weeks. And I want to challenge us as a board to see if we can come up with some type of an incentive for that high school meeting, those attendance goals. So put your thinking caps on. Maybe we can join in with the team somehow. So thank you all very much, and I guess we are ready to go into closed session?
Yes, ma'am. Pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia, it is recommended the board convene a closed meeting for the following: A1 Personnel Matters.
All right, board, I need a motion.
So moved.